Welcome, everyone. I would like to call our meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Palowski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Barton?
Present.
President Allen?
Here.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notices regarding hearings, comments, and closed session.
A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of closed session and regular meeting minutes of July 30th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
You may have it. Councilman Barton.
Did you get that, Rose?
Yes.
Okay. Clerk. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Okay. I'm going to shuffle our agenda slightly tonight. We're going to do the historical minute first, our proclamation, and then our presentation ahead of our report. So, Councilman Palowski.
So, thank you. As everybody knows, we like to get Summit High School students in to do the historical minute. We're coming off the summer. We haven't been able to do that. But tonight, we have a Summit High School senior, at least he was in 1958, who's going to give us a little history on athletic fields in Summit. And that senior is Gil Orin.
Oh, aha. Thanks.
I am a senior, and I have notes. I'm Gil Orin, O-W-R-E-N, 45 Wallace Road, and I did graduate from Summit High School in 1958 in the old building, had the junior high and high together, and New Providence, by the way. Half of our sports teams were in New Providence in those days, so we did okay. It said, "One minute." There isn't a lawyer, is there, Matt?
No.
That can say anything in one minute. I'll do my best. He asked me to talk about the fields before '62, when we have Tatlock was operational, and I can. But it wasn't fields. It was one field, one. One field. If you were with a friend, you said, "I'll meet you at the field," you didn't have to tell him, he or she, where it was. It was Memorial Field. It was never called Soldiers Memorial Field, maybe July 4th, but it was the field. At that field was all the high school football, soccer, baseball, track, and tennis, everything, really, except maybe wrestling and basketball. And at all levels, and it was, when schools started, as it did today, I guess, it was wild, wild. There wasn't an inch that wasn't taken up. Example, the freshman football field was an area between the backstop for the high school baseball team and the track, just that area. And there was no, no lines, no nothing, just, well, Mort Ashburn was one of the coaches. He didn't know football too well, but he knew you had to be tough. His whole practice was, take a lap where, coach, around the perimeter of the field, cut back, and do it again. And then two lines, one for barking, one for tackling, and he really lost the game because it was more fun playing than it was practicing, especially with him. And the idea of the Tatlock Field came up because you couldn't practice and play with all those, with all these teams every day, and games, and so on and so forth. And with Tatlock, I did a little research on it, and that whole comp area, all that property, was donated by William Tatlock in 1914 and utilized by the Board of Ed, Board of Rec, and the council to create Tatlock Field. The, one of the Tatlocks was the president of the Board of Rec, Gerard Tatlock, and he was instrumental in getting that done. Just think, if that hadn't been done, this is before Title IX, which came in '72, I think, and before lacrosse. If that had happened, and we had to have lacrosse and all the girls' teams, I don't have to tell you what happened. So Tatlock was a good thing for the City of Summit, but I loved Memorial Field. When we moved from East Orange, my father and mother bought a house on Park View Terrace. So my front yard was Memorial Field, the field. A lot of good memories, and I'm glad, I didn't want to move. I had friends in East Orange, and my father said, he was just, he had spent four years in the service in World War II. He said, "Look, you're moving." That was the end of it. And I'm glad we did, and I'm glad we had the field.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Orin. That was a wonderful story, so. Okay. Moving on to proclamations. Madam Mayor, please present your proclamation.
Is that better? Oh, look, can you hear me?
There you go.
Come on up. Hi. Thank you for being here. You sent everybody else to work. Is that what happened? Okay. All right. Whereas health and safety are paramount to a sound community, and whereas since July 28th, 1962, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have provided a vital public service to our community in support of health and safety, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have given an untold number of hours of service to Summit residents and patrons of our businesses and medical institutions, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad answered more than 2,300 emergency calls for help last year from Summit residents, visitors, and from surrounding communities in need of mutual aid support, and whereas Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have responded to emergencies of all types at all hours of the day and night, and whereas in addition to 911 emergency calls, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members regularly provide non-emergency coverage at many community events. Whereas the efforts of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members, all of whom are volunteers, should not go unrecognized, and whereas the dedication and hard work of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members provides quality care at no cost to the patient or taxpayer, saving the City of Summit approximately $2 million per year. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad Month in the City of Summit in recognition of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad and the importance of all the good deeds contributed by its many volunteers for 62 years. And I ask all citizens to join me in praising these volunteers and lending the squad your financial support. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this third day of September in the year 2024. Thank you for being here, and I want to say on a personal note, we had a little medical emergency at my house. I won't give details, but these guys are incredibly professional and made sure everything turned out okay. So I, and so I want to be, let everybody know how grateful I am personally. I think we're really incredibly lucky to have an awesome first aid squad here in Summit, and they do need volunteers, and they always are looking for volunteers, so. Thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Laura Vina Vento. For those who don't know me, I'm Deputy Chief. Mayor, thank you very much for this honor and recognition. So for the past 62 years, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad has been providing emergency services not just to the residents of Summit, but also providing assistance to our surrounding towns in their time of need. We responded to more than 2,300 calls last year, 24/7, 365 days a year. Our squad is staffed fully by volunteers. We have individuals, actually, the majority of our members do not have healthcare backgrounds at all. We have attorneys, CPAs, bankers, people in the financial sector, ex-military. They all went to get their EMT certification, and all of our members are volunteers and graciously offer their time and efforts with no financial compensation. And so we thank the community for their financial support. But it's not just the financial support that we need to keep this organization running. We desperately need volunteers. There are squads throughout the country, many, that have folded due to a lack of EMTs, and yet some EMS has continued to thrive during these challenging times. And so please consider being a volunteer for us. It is our privilege to serve the residents of this community, and we're collaborative with our members of City Council and Summit Fire Department and Summit Police Department. So thank you again very much for this recognition.
I'm Jordan Checkford, the chief of the squad, and it's really an honor for us to be able to serve the people of Summit and the surrounding communities. It's a high honor for us, and we also deeply appreciate the support that all of you have given to us over the years. We really appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being here.
Yep. Thank you for all your work. Okay. All right. Okay, we're going to move on to presentations. With all the roadwork that has been done this summer, we thought it would be beneficial to invite Matthew Rose from PSENG to give us an update on what the work, what work they're doing, what has been done, what is left to do, and what projects are on the horizon. So I'd like to thank Matthew for joining us tonight. Oh, there you are. I was like, he is here, right? Thank you, Matthew, for coming tonight.
Not a problem. Thank you to the mayor and council for inviting us to be here. It's very important to PSENG to be good partners with the communities that we do work in, so we enjoy doing events like this where we get to come out and kind of go through some of the infrastructure upgrade programs we're doing. For those of you who I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet, my name's Matt Rose. I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager at PSENG, who covers Union and Somerset County. I just started in this role this summer, but I've been at PSENG for the past seven years. I've had the opportunity to meet some of you. For those who I'm meeting tonight, I look forward to working with you. I know we've always had a very positive relationship with the City of Summit, and I look forward to continuing that and making sure that we're a good partner within the community. As I'm sure most of you are aware, we're in the process of doing some gas work, upgrading aging gas infrastructure, both in the City of Summit and throughout the state. Our gas system modernization program was recently given an extension and renewed, so we have some work that we're doing in the City of Summit currently and some work that's planned in the upcoming fall and next year. I'm going to turn it over to our project team in a couple seconds so they could talk a little bit about that work in more detail. But since 2014, through this gas system modernization program and through other programs that are similar, we've replaced over 1,800 miles of gas main throughout the state, including in the City of Summit. This has resulted in a reduction in leaks, a reduction in methane emissions, and enhanced safety and reliability to help us keep up with demand and meet future needs. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our project team, to Sweta, our project manager, and Eric, our construction supervisor, to give an update on the work. And then afterwards, we'll give an update on some of our communication and how we keep the residents informed of the work that's going on in the area. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a little clicker on the podium for you to advance the slides for you.
I'm Eric Adams, A-D-A-M-S, Senior Supervisor of Gas Construction. So we identified in 2024 13.3 miles of replacement and 600 replacement services. In 2025, we identified 11.6 miles, wait, a click. 11.6 miles of gas main replacement and 950 services. And like Matt said, the benefit of this is to reduce leaks, reduce methane, cost savings, allowing people to upgrade their appliances, afford to get a generator, going from low pressure to high pressure. And relocating of the meters has improved emergency access, just in case if the first responders need to respond to hours, they could turn the gas off from the outside. So right now, we have a map SU 625, and if you could turn to the street list. We're currently, we're not currently working in there right now because we're waiting on one road, Butler Parkway. Butler Parkway. Everything else on that map is done. Only thing that's left is Butler Parkway, so all the other streets are done, and we're ready for paving. Right now, 702, we're in 702. We have three crews working in there. I have a crew on Beekman Road. We also identified the school on Beekman Road. I have a crew also working on Oakley Ave, Warwick Road, and we also identified the school on Valley Avenue, off of Blackburn. So what we do with that, we work, we work with PD closely. We adjust our times accordingly, so if we need to let the school travel, we can. We start from nine to two, we get off the road, we get back on the road. What else we got here? We got three crews in here on this map, and then we also identify 703. 703, this map has not yet started, but we're looking to do this, if you can go to the street list on this map here. All these streets we're looking to start sometime later this year, like October, it'll take us into 2025. The next slide. 716, this has also been identified for Summit, and this is going to start in 2025, take us into 2026.
Can you just blow those street lists up? I can't. I'm just, if we could just go back to 703. Sorry. I wasn't sure whether the street list started for 703.
703 is.
So that starts with Gerard? Okay. I have it on my computer, I just wasn't sure where you have it.
And Clerk Lickatis, this will go out in the notes for people.
It'll be included in the minutes.
Yeah.
The minutes will show it.
If anybody means I have a paper copy, anybody would like it as well.
You need one now?
Thank you.
We can also put this on website.
Oh, yeah. That would be wonderful. We'll put it on the website.
Over here. All the council persons with glasses.
That's it. That's fine.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine. I'm waiting for you. 703?
Yes. Okay. So let me make sure we're right. Sorry. Thank you.
Go ahead.
That's it? That's it.
Oh, all right.
Can I ask questions?
Oh, well, after they're done.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can ask your question.
Okay, sure. I just, I can't see the grid. So is red, so if we go back to the first one, is blue all complete?
No. 703 has not yet started.
Sorry, but I'm sorry, even if you go back to 625, blue's all done.
625. No, so the colors to the map doesn't mean anything to you? That's just letting me know what type of program or what type of pipe we're going to be installing in that area.
Okay.
Has to do with our internal.
So the Butler Parkway is the only thing left on 625 to be done.
Got it.
And then we need to do the final restoration of the road.
Matthew, do you want to come sit at the table so then you have a, yeah, and then you also have a microphone? So pull the microphone up if you want to weigh in, too.
Okay. You want to sit down as well? I worry you're not standing.
Yeah, come. Yeah, have a seat. And then just pull the microphone close if you speak. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Counselor?
And then we could go into the outreach piece. So with the outreach, before we kick off anything, we do the communications, we do doorknob, we do door hanging, we do roll calls, we do mailers. We also come with a 1-800 number, one there, that you can call anytime, and someone will call you back within 24 hours. Also, inside this, Sweta, you put our names, right?
Yeah.
Also, you got a number that you can call is 908-279-3217.
Can you repeat that?
That's my number. 908?
Yeah. 908.
279.
279.
3217.
3217. Wonderful. Actually, you were helpful with one of our other residents who, on Blackburn Road, was, yeah. So thank you for calling her.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that. Okay.
So this line is only for, if you want to talk about the project. If you have a gas leak or anything, please do not call this line. You need to call the 1-800-GAS-LEAK-LINE.
Oh, okay. Okay. Or 911.
This is only for the project.
Or 911.
Or 911.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you flip through the outreach piece, you could show them like what they could be looking for before we kick off the program. Nope, bad. Back one more. One more. There we go. These are the, these are the handouts that we give before we start the program.
Wonderful. Okay. Well, I know you guys, I live, you came and knocked on my door, so I knew that you guys were in the neighborhood, so. Thank you. Thank you for your work. And you're actually installing individual lines in some cases, too.
Yeah, so all our work is between the curb and sidewalk, right? So we got to install the main, that's usually the roadway, and then we have to go to every house to connect it to the new main.
Okay.
Can you, hi, I'm Greg.
Counsel, this is Councilman Barton.
Thank you for coming. Can you talk about timeline? So I think, if I think, remember from when we had this conversation last year, you dig the trench, you do the work there, you do a cold patch over that, that's there for some amount of time, and then it's paved over, right? So what's the timeframe from start to finish on that whole thing?
So start to finish, so we'll start a project, and usually after we're done with all the services, we install the main, we replace the services, we retire the old main. We leave the trench at least 90 days to settle, settlement. So once it settles, then we pave.
Okay.
So all our roads.
Restoration on your property could be a little bit different. So if we disturb your grass or something like that, we can have that done a lot quicker.
Okay. Okay. And I'm sorry, the list of, oh, yep, go ahead, Councilman.
So in regards to the paving, I know some of these streets may have been recently paved. And I know Morris Ave, in particular, and it may not be PSENG, it may be JCPN, one of the acronyms, right? There's like a strip that is down the roadway, right? So when you, when you, when you dig up and to put a pipe in, do you pave the entire surface, or is there a different grade of elevation that you leave? Like, is it, do you leave it in the same condition that it's in?
Yes.
Okay. So you do the whole surface, not just?
Not all, not all streets. So once we're done with the project, then we sit down with the town, and then we come up with the limits on what we're going to pave. So sometimes the pavement could be curb to centerline, or sometimes the pavement could be curb to curb.
Okay.
The limits vary.
So you sit down with our, like, with our city engineer, and you'll decide, like, how the street is going to look after you're done? Okay. All right. I know some of the residents have a concern that, you know, these roads are, listen, I know you have to put the pipe in. But I know the concern is that these roads are consistently being ripped up, and then they're repaved, but not, they're not in the same condition that they were left in. So that, that's just a concern, maybe something that, you know, you can think about.
Where would Morris at?
So that would be Morris Avenue, what I want to say, is that?
Near Ortred.
Ortred.
Or the Kent Place.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's, it's all over. It's like different spots.
Oh, that's the county road that you're talking about, right?
Yeah, so we could blame it on the county.
No, no, we worked on it. It's a guy.
I got you. All right.
There's no one from the county here. You can say what you want.
All right, that's, that's just a little, that's just a takeaway that I have.
All right, no problem.
Can I ask one more?
Yeah.
Sorry. How do you decide, I know some work goes on at night, some work goes on during the day. How do you decide which, which is which?
So it's usually determined by the permit.
Okay.
So the permit will allow us, let us know what we need to do.
Okay.
But we usually don't do any work at night.
Oh.
That's usually the water company or somebody like that.
Okay.
So to your point, Greg, if you got a permit to work in the summer, then that would, right, we just got to do a summer program.
You want this done, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a good question. So what Councilman Barton was asking is how do you prioritize? And I think, I might want to take words out of your mouth, but how do you prioritize the streets? And the other thing that stuck out for me tonight was you said you identified a school. We can give you all that information. In fact, we have a superintendent of schools who was chasing down a PSENG truck the other day, trying to figure out what was going on. So I think it might be helpful if we can coordinate a meeting with our superintendent.
Okay.
Because right now, the areas that you're doing specifically on Blackburn and Beekman Terrace are literally on top of schools on the first week of school. So how could we have facilitated a better timeline to do this during the summer around the schools?
Well, I could have started, well, the project didn't start until like right before school, like maybe a month ago. So if we would have got in here a little bit early before, like after June, we could have been out of the area by the school.
But if we said to you, we really want this done by July 15th, could you have done that, or was that totally not even possible?
Not possible.
Is the reason because you were doing other streets in Summit?
No, because now you have someone home, someone's on vacation, so we got to work around everyone's schedule to actually get the work done. So I can install the main.
Got it.
I can do all that work.
That was my question.
But I can't connect you if you're not home.
But if I'm not home, does it matter?
Say it again.
If I'm not home, does it matter? Do you have to have all the streets connected by the time you're done?
No, so I have to do it in phases. So I have to identify, where can I get the pressure?
Okay.
So once I get the pressure, I look at it, and then I can go in that direction only.
Okay.
In order to connect your house for a service, you need to be home.
Okay. That's helpful. Is division done or not done? I mean, if you don't know now, but I feel like we just did that road project, so. I see it on here.
There's no work on, there's no work on division.
Ever, for the next five years.
No.
That's all I wanted to know.
Do we have that in writing?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I was going to say, there's two projects. You have the main, and then you have the individual homes. And Blackburn Road got torn up for the main, but I noticed then you had to go back to a couple of the individual homes in order to open that road back up.
Yes.
But it was because they weren't home, the, you had to schedule that with the homeowners, But it was because they weren't home, the, you had to schedule that with the homeowners, right?
So I can install the main, no problem without the homeowners being home.
Right.
It's only when I need to do the service connections, everyone has, has the home.
Right.
And for, for all the streets, we have to go around customer availability, making sure that we schedule with the individual customers. Because we are working on their property, we want them to be aware of what we're doing. They need to be home to allow us access, because most of the meters are inside and we're moving them from inside to outside. And then afterwards, we do retire the older system. So people need to be on the newer system before we take the older system at a service.
Got it. Okay. Any other council members' questions? No? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That was easy. Okay, thank you for your time, get home safe. And we're on to reports, Mayor.
May I ask questions?
Oh.
Can I ask a question?
Not normally, um. Yeah, we can, yeah, come back up, come back up.
Yeah.
No, no, Don, no, no. It's okay.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. I know there's some talk about some, uh, work being done on Canoe Brook. Do you guys coordinate with the city prior to that work being done? Is there work being done on Butler Parkway? Is there gonna be, isn't there a grant or something for Butler Parkway or Canoe Brook that we can coordinate with you? That the city can coordinate with you guys? So we're not doing the work Tuesday and then you're digging it up Wednesday? Or you're working Wednesday and we're digging it up Thursday, so we can coordinate that work? Do you guys work together that way?
Yeah, we do work with the city with that.
Yeah. Uh, Director Schrager, do you want to say anything about that?
To you, Council President, I could just clarify, the grant is for Canoe Brook Parkway. And then they do have a request to do something on Butler Parkway, which we have not approved, because it is in the moratorium, but we're working with them, because if there is a way to restore it to a condition we'd be happy with, and to not then halt this whole project would be better. So we'll be having that call shortly, but otherwise, yes, we give them the roads that we're doing in the next few years annually, and they send us when they, when they can. I mean, it does not always line up the, the way we would like it, but yes, ideally, we always want them in before we do our work, so.
All right, thank you.
Just go here. Yeah. Sorry. Hi, Stacy Allen, Plymouth Road. My question is really about, I think it's pertaining to what Councilman Boyer asked, where the road has been paved recently, and it's nice and clean, and then it gets torn up, and there's like a hump on the road. So when you drive down the road, your car is rattling a lot. I was driving down Watchong Avenue in Chatham, Wright Two Summit, where the, um, the new Ivy building is. And that road is like, half the road is repaved, so it's.
That road is not finished yet, it's not totally done.
Oh, well, it was really nice, because it was smooth when you drive, compared to a big bump in the middle of the road. I have to say, the fact that it was where your tires are, both your tires are, made it much smoother. So I think everybody wants smooth roads.
Yes, we want everyone to have smooth roads.
So when we have a nicely paved road and then you guys have to replace the pipes, then there's a big hump in the road, and then it's really bumpy again. So I'm just asking, is there another, I, I know nothing about roads, I'm sorry to stick my nose in this, but I'm asking 'cause you're here. It seems like maybe there's another solution, so that it can be made smooth again?
Yes. So you, you're talking about final restoration or before restoration?
I don't know, I don't know, the hump seems to last a pretty long time, I'm just gonna call it the hump.
Yeah, I'm gonna jump in really quick. I think she's referring to the trench.
The trench.
The trench.
But is, is it a trench and then it has pavement, it has macadam over it?
Do they, when you, when you do a trench and you replace the main and then you cover it up, is it generally?
It should be flat.
It should be flat?
Yes, so if you have a hump or something like that, then you need to call that number and call me.
Okay.
But you shouldn't have any, it should be, it should be flat.
It's all of east of Morris Avenue right now.
I know, we're working on that, that's getting ready to be finally.
So specifically that road you're saying will be worked on still? Okay, that's my question, thank you.
Any, any other questions? I want to give everybody the opportunity.
Just to be clear on, uh, what Mrs. Allen was talking about, and I, I think maybe we could kind of clear this up for the public, right? So there's, I know you talked about it, there's a couple of stages, right? So the final restoration is where the, the plate will be taken out, the road would be completely even.
So the final restoration is, is when we call that, is like when they come in, they mill a road two inches and replace the back top.
Yeah.
They mill the road and then they repave it. That's final restoration. So the restoration you see now, once the trench is there and the services are done, that's temp.
And that's 90 days, and then?
Yes, minimal of 90 days.
Minimal, okay. And if any residents have an issue and it's there for 180 days, they should call you, right?
Should call.
Okay.
The 908-279-3217.
Thank you for your presentation, thank you for coming here.
Just kind of to add to the 90-day thing, it also depends on the time of year, because obviously, all paving is weather dependent. So if we do finish in November, we may not be able to come back and pave until the spring. So just, want to make sure everybody's mindful that we do have roads that sometimes can sit a little bit longer as we get them on the paving schedule, because coming back in the spring, we have to go through everything that was completed in the winter and get it scheduled to be paved, so there are, sometimes there's a little bit of variability in those timelines.
So Matt is saying, November is like the threshold, like when the weather stops, you can't pave when it's freezing outside. So if it's in November, December, we won't pave until the weather breaks.
I'm sorry, I can't help it, 'cause I'm a runner and I like, you know, I, I see this stuff all the time. What about the debris? Is there any way to, I know it has to sit for a period of time, three months, um, but what about the debris?
Should be.
Would it be possible to come by and remove the debris that, that builds up from these trenches?
Yeah, we maintain the trench, so we just don't leave it like all winter. We maintain the trench, so we could, we could take care of that.
So again, if there are areas where there's a lot of debris, rocks, you know, different things, we just give you a call and, okay, thank you.
There's someone out there.
Get ready for your phone to start ringing.
Got it. And Morris, Morris Avenue. Okay, Morris Avenue in front of the Rec Center seems unfinished for about a year now. So the Rec Center, it, it's, um.
A hundred, 100 Morris Ave.
100 Morris Avenue, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that, that road is gonna be done this month.
Okay.
So that road is being half paved by the county, and the other half is gonna be paved by us. So as soon as they do their piece, then we'll do ours.
Perfect.
Why don't you just give them the money and just let them do all of it? So it's nice and even?
Yeah, that, that would be great.
Could we do that?
And forgive me, I'm not laughing at you, it's that when you said the county, I'm like, oh.
No, it's gonna be done, I spoke to him this week.
All right, cool.
I know him, so he'll be all right.
I would escape while you still can. No, thank you.
Great presentation, and thank you for coming and explaining, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. I'm gonna do reports, yeah. Actually, um, Mayor, you're the only person doing reports tonight.
That's a good thing, 'cause I have a lot to say.
I know.
So today marks the first day of school for our public schools here in Summit. So I'd like to use this as an opportunity to remind everyone to be extra attentive when they are walking, biking, or driving, and don't forget to wear your bike helmets. I also want to mention the great work by Girl Scout Troop 41160. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to help with the Girl Scouts painting the crosswalk with Pat from our DPW at Lincoln Hubbard. Thank you for highlighting the importance of pedestrian safety and for identifying a way to increase visibility of a busy school crosswalk. And you all should keep an eye out for the city's social media posts with some photos. It was a great day, and it was, it's very pretty, it's a rainbow, if you haven't seen pictures yet or haven't been by. Department of Community Programs has some upcoming events. The Bike Rodeo will be held on September 10th at 4:30 PM at Soldier's Memorial Field, Gill. Children are encouraged to bring their bike and their helmet to this free event. Representatives from Avenues in Motion will perform helmet fit checks and basic bicycle maintenance inspections. Participants can ride through an obstacle course and visit stations that will highlight various bicycle skills and safety scenarios riders may encounter on the road. Most importantly, there will be free ice cream for participants. For information about all other awesome events that the Department of Community Programs is putting on in the, in the coming weeks, please check out their website, summitcommunityprograms.com. Regarding Anderson Fieldhouse at Tatlock, the City of Summit contracted with Servpro for the cleanup of the fieldhouse. The cleanup took three days and has been completed. A third-party industrial hygienist was there this morning to test air samples and swabs throughout the building. We should have those results within 48 hours and probably less than that, because I got that information a few hours ago. If there's anything additional found, Servpro will remediate. If nothing else is found, we will have a clean bill of health and the building will be considered sanitary. Thank you to the Board of Ed for temporarily repairing the roof, replacing the ceiling tiles, and fixing the lighting. Last Saturday was Overdose Awareness Day, and our agenda tonight includes accepting opioid grant money, so it seems fitting to stand together as a community to remember those who we have lost to overdose and to support the families and friends affected by this tragedy. Grant funding allows us to enhance our efforts to combat this epidemic. These resources will allow us to expand access to treatment, increase educational programs, and provide vital support services for those struggling with opioid addiction. We are committed to breaking the stigma surrounding substance use and ensuring that those in need know they are not alone. Quick Bryant Pond update that I just received today from the county, very briefly, unfortunately, not what I wanted to hear, but the county is committed to continuing this project and is working out the pricing and logistics at this time, and I will await more information, but that is all I have about Bryant Pond. I will continue to poke the county as much as I can. Finally, my office hours have changed, and they will be by appointment going forward to allow for more flexibility for residents and so that I can permit to have undivided attention for the residents that do come to visit me. You can email me at efagan@cityofsummit.org or call the city clerk's office to schedule. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so normally, we'd go to public comment, but we had anticipated a heavy presentation schedule tonight, plus some extra proclamations, they fell off this schedule, so we, the public comments stayed where they are, but we didn't have quite the presentations tonight, but a lot of them got moved to the 17th. So we're gonna have a little. What?
Before you move on, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to talk about the fieldhouse for a second. You know, I, I really, I really want the residents to know about Councilman Palowski and Councilman Smallwood. The day that the football team had found out was when I received a call from Councilman Smallwood. And these two, uh, were amazing. I mean, I didn't, I think they may have even slept at the field one night. But, you know, they, they got in contact with the city employees right away, and, and our city employees did a great job as well. But the attention that they paid to the residents and the concerns that the residents had, A, for mold issues, and B, so that the seniors would be able to enjoy their last year of football having a fieldhouse. So they acted with an extreme sense of urgency, and I just wanted to thank these two gentlemen. They, they did an excellent job getting everyone together to get this done, thank you.
Yes, thank you both. And thank you, Mr. Councilman Boyer, that was, you're right. Okay, so we're gonna do the business agenda first tonight, then we'll get to public comments and then council comments. So we're gonna do, on to resolutions first. Councilman Plasky, resolution, your first one.
Yeah, this is Resolution ID Number 11470, which we discussed in closed session. It's an, to authorize execution of a settlement agreement for a city employee, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, council comments? Public comments? Wait, hold on, hold on.
Good evening, everyone, Andrew McCurdy from Parkview Terrace. My comment tonight is about this line in the agenda about a settlement agreement and the lack of information about it. There was a similar one in the last council meeting. So that's two meetings in a row where there's been a settlement agreement with a city employee with no information provided. In both cases, there was no information about the position of the individual, their seniority, when it would take effect, when they were leaving, the amount of the settlement agreement. There's literally zero information provided here. And I do think that that's cause for a concern, given the potential trend and given the lack of transparency. So the question is, why, why all the secrecy? You know, these are taxpayer dollars that are being used to pay out, to settle some sort of claims. And, and taxpayers deserve to know if these decisions are being made responsibly. Are these one-off situations? Or is there something more systemic happening, that there needs to be all these settlement agreements with city employees who are leaving? And then the broader point is, if they are senior employees in the city, it seems like there could be a real concern about the functioning of the Town of Summit. These are the people that make the town run. So is there any concern like that? And it's hard for the public to know without more information. So my request is more transparency, more information about this settlement agreement, the one from January 30th, one's going forward. And so the public can hold council, hold government to account for whether the decisions are being made appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak on that?
I, I can speak that, first and foremost, there's no systemic problem in the city. It's actually prudent, whenever you have employees that are departing, if you can come to a mutual agreement and get a settlement agreement for whatever payout they are, they've negotiated, which could include vacation leave, et cetera. A settlement agreement prevents the specter of litigation, and I can tell you, I've been doing it for 31 years. Public entities get sued more than any other entity, because lawyers, unfortunately, I'm one of them, but lawyers know the deep pockets of public entities. And so if you can avoid litigation, you're actually saving the taxpayers lots of money. Settlement agreements, the reason that they're done, they're not done in secrecy. Settlement agreements are operable documents in, in New Jersey. Taxpayers do have a right to know. None of these are large payouts whatsoever, they're just prudent payouts to make sure that the city is not exposed to litigation. I don't think it would be very prudent to pay a departing employee money and not get a settlement agreement, because very often, those departing employees could turn around and sue you, and you got nothing to protect the city. The other thing that folks should know is whenever you enter into a settlement agreement, there's a number of laws that are covered. One of those laws is called the Older Worker Benefit Protection Act. I know you'll find this hard to believe, but if you're over age 40, you can assert an age discrimination claim. And in order to waive an Age Discrimination in Employment Act claim, you have to give the person 21 days to consider the agreement, and then after they execute it, seven days to revoke it. And that's the Older Worker Benefit Protection Act that covers anybody over age 40. So the reason that there's not discussions is that there are statutory periods upon which we need to wait before you say anything whatsoever. But I can assure you that the city is very well-run, I mean, let's not kid ourselves, the person who runs the city is Ms. Licatise, we all know that. So it's, it's very well-run, none of these are, I think people would, when they, if they open them, they can see. They're just payments and it's done prudently. And I practiced a lot of my area in the area of employment and labor law, that's what I've done for 31 years. And I can tell you that if you can avoid litigation, a small payout to avoid litigation, litigation can cost not tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that's taxpayers paying for it. So we try to avoid that to make sure that you're spending your tax dollars on more prudent things that really benefit the, the residents of the city.
Thank you.
And not lawyers such as myself.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay. We're gonna vote then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Councilman Plasky, your second resolution?
Yes, this is Resolution ID Number 11478, to appoint a city, to appoint interim city administrator. As discussed in closed session, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Councilman Smallwood, your first resolution?
Thank you, Council President, this is ID Number 1147.
Sorry, sorry, my apologies. I would like to, my apologies, I'd like to bring up Mr. Tucci, who we just, you didn't.
Yeah, so if I could introduce.
Okay, I'm a little rusty, it's, it's after the summer.
Our interim city manager is Tom Tucci. We brought him in as a consultant on general municipal government matters back in August. He's an experienced BA, having run Cedar Grove for over 30 years. When our current BA went on administrative leave, we had to find somebody. Tom has the experience and has, through his consulting work over the last month, gained a working knowledge of our city and its employees. He was available and is the logical choice to act in this, in this interim capacity. So, Tom, would you like to join us up here?
Sure.
Best seat in the house.
Please come take your seat at the end. Would you like to say? Yes, absolutely.
First of all, my name is Tom Tucci. I'm happy to be here. I want to tell you that I'm gonna be working for the governing body. Look forward to working with all of you, with the city of employees, and for the people of the city of Summit. Thomas Jefferson once said, he's a. he's a great believer in luck. Well, the harder you work, the luckier you get. That's what he said. Those are his words, not mine. And that's my intention here, to work hard for the city. We're gonna look at everything. We're gonna see what we do well, or continue to do that well. And we're gonna look at things we don't do so well, and we're gonna do better. Because we can always do better as government. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. And, Tom, welcome.
Thank you.
Council President, this is ID number 11471. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor and municipal clerk of the City of Summit to execute an agreement with the County of Union to modify the cooperative agreement dated June 2014, as amended July 25, 2017. This is part of the Summit Department of Community Programs' request approval to enter the shared agreement services for 50 years of the Community Development Block Grant. The County of Union has approved the following grants as part of this year's program. $7,500 to the City of Summit Youth Center, $5,000 to the City of Summit Senior Connection Bus, $25,000 to the City of Summit Maybe Playground Project, $8,000 to Grace, and $9,000 to Warm Hearts. The purpose of this resolution is to continue the shared services agreement to make the funds available to the City of Summit. This is in continuation to the existing agreement. And the programs that are made available through this program aim to provide services to individuals of low and moderate income. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second.
Okay.
Council President, may I just add to Councilman Smallwood's description that the list of projects also includes the Housing Authority's upgrade of playgrounds at their various locations on Weaver Street and Dennis Place, or Glenwood, perhaps, one of the three.
Okay.
Two of the three.
Yeah, it's Weaver and Glenwood.
And it's misnamed. It's called the Senior Building Playground? That's not correct. So there's clarification for that.
Did I say senior?
Yep, that's what I wanted to say.
Council President, one question on the resolution. The modification that's being made, is that to include additional projects?
The projects that were included in the list.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Hamlet?
A couple of questions. Councilman Smallwood, I apologize, I didn't ask earlier. I sort of had the same question as Mr. Tucci. Couple of questions. On page, page 28, and Matt, I might have to have you look at this one before or after the meeting. The prohibitions of funding, where it says, "No urban county funding shall be provided for activities in or support of any municipality that does not affirmatively further fair housing with its own jurisdiction." The, does the residency requirement right now preclude us from, are we in compliance? Because if we're not affirmatively marketing those units, I know that we've been doing this a long time, but with that...
I believe that fair housing is a federal law. We're talking about the compliance, that's to meet your state affordable housing. So I do believe you're in compliance with the federal law. You actually get federal monies for your various things through HUD. So I would venture to guess if you're getting money from HUD to provide your low and moderate income and some of your senior buildings, what's happening is for you guys to get credit for COA, you no longer can have a residency preference. You have to open it up as you do the rehab. So that's dealing with the COA aspect of it, but it has no impact. You're in compliance with the Fair Housing Act.
Okay. And then, secondly, I can't remember those five or so projects. Have we identified what those projects are for? So the money for Warm Hearts and Grace? Because in this, it says you have to identify an actual specific project, and I can't remember if we had a specific project for those.
They're listed.
Yeah. The Warm Hearts one and Grace? I know the playground was listed, but I didn't see the other ones.
It's on the memo. Do you want to speak on it?
Right, but what is the money actually gonna be used for? So I understand that there's...
It's all, the Warm Hearts and a couple of others are associated with the Grace services that are provided through the community programs.
Okay.
And that's why they're listed separately. They're not individually, they're not getting funding directly. They're going, it's going through the Grace services that are provided.
Okay.
With Warm Hearts and, there's another one there. They contribute to the services of Grace.
Okay, that's it. That was my last question. Thank you. Sorry to ask you earlier.
And I believe they were all approved. All the grants were specific in the applications in 2023.
Yep.
Okay. Any other council comments? Okay. Public comment? All right, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Smallwood, your second resolution?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11453, appoint parking services agency director. Pending closed session discussion. And I am very proud to announce that our assistant director, Nicole Sewicki, has been awarded the director's position of parking, the parking director's position. So congratulations to Nicole.
Do we have a second?
Oh, and I, oh, sorry. My second was a little ahead of myself.
I didn't want to interrupt. All right, wonderful. Okay, go ahead. Anything else to add?
No, I just would like to congratulate, you know, we had a couple of applications, and through the application process, we did decide that Nicole had the experience as well as the aptitude to work with our current employees. And we ultimately decided Nicole Sewicki would be the best fit for that position. So congratulations to Nicole.
Councilman Miniger, did you want to say anything? Because you were part of the interview process.
Is Nicole here tonight? No, she's not.
She's not.
The interview was fantastic. Nicole has already made changes as interim director that have really benefited the city. So I think you're gonna see a better parking services going forward. So very proud of our decision, and I wish her the best in her new role.
All right. Congratulations, Nicole. Okay. Public comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Smallwood? We're tabling number three. Oh, yes, actually, Madam Clerk, I would like to table number three? Can we do that? That's fine. We're just pulling it. We're pulling number three, which is Resolution number 11452. Okay, then we're gonna move on to finance. Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11445, and this resolution certifies the 2023 audit review. This resolution is an annual occurrence, as required by the state of New Jersey, that we certify to the local finance board that members of this governing body have reviewed that audit for 2023. Under CFO Tammy Baldwin, we have once again achieved a solid review with only one recommendation. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second. Excellent. Council comments? Public comments?
Yes, I just have one comment.
It's okay. Go ahead. Yeah.
And this, and this, maybe Councilman Miniger, maybe you can answer this. The liabilities for bonds and notes and loan payments have increased from $90 million in 2022 to $109. I'm just estimating, in 2023. So this is a pretty substantial increase. Do you, do you know the reason for that?
I can ask. CFO Baldwin can answer that for sure.
It's through you, Council President. We have bonded more money. We have done more capital projects. So you'll see, you'll see notes, those are the bands, and bonds for the additional capital work that we've done.
We could probably talk about this later, but is there any specific work that you could point to for the $20 million? Or is there...
You're looking at, there's a bond anticipation note out. We went out to bond in 2022. So the notes increased until we go out to permanently bond. So I'm not sure if you're looking just at unfunded or funded. So we can review the detail behind that one report, if you'd like, but I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. It was just something I was looking at. And the other concern with the recommendation on the police off-duty billing, has that, have we came up with controls for that? Are we...
Through you, Council President. Yes, that's the next resolution. I'll describe a little bit of that.
Good. Okay.
Just the recommendation through you, Council President. Maybe the CFO can give the governing body a copy of the debt schedule. This way, we're all aware of what the debt schedule is and how it's gonna incrementally increase or decrease over the term. The CFO has all that information. She supplied it with me. Did a wonderful job with it. Thank you.
Through you, Council President.
Yes, Councilman Miniger.
We get that as part of the budget process, right? And we get an update from you regularly, quarterly, I think, right? You send around the, you send around the schedule. Thank you.
And I would just say, Tammy, thanks for all your hard work on that. I know you have never really had too many recommendations from auditors. So this will be a small one that will talk about the next resolution. For my colleagues, I would say, if you haven't picked up an actual copy of the audit, it's really helpful because I read it cover to cover for a few days in a row and came in with my head spinning asking Tammy questions. But as you prepare for the next budget season, it's really, really important that if you have specific questions, that you ask Tammy what those are, because they really do go hand in hand. And I, if you don't want to flip on your computer, but get your highlighter out, I'm actually meeting with Tammy next week to go over 50 questions that I had, very little questions, but it's a really important document. I highly recommend you get the actual book, so.
Thank you. Okay. Public comment?
Good evening. I'm Claire Toth at 11 Sunset Drive. CFO Baldwin and her team should be congratulated on this audit. Because Summit relies on public money, our tax dollars, were subject to a set of audit rules issued by the Federal Government Accounting Office. It's sometimes called a Yellow Book Audit because the standards were initially bound in yellow. In addition to everything reviewed in a typical financial audit, a Yellow Book Audit reviews performance standards to ensure ethical behavior. And thus, it's much more rigorous than a standard audit. Recently, the Financial Accounting Standards Board and the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, which govern auditors and audits, have issued marching orders. Yellow Book Audits are not supposed to be clean. At a minimum, auditors are expected to find deficiencies. A deficiency itself is essentially a footfall. Other terms describe more serious financial problems. With this background, a missing receipt or time card or two is about as minor as you can get. Here, it's called a recommendation, not even a deficiency. In a world where CFO Baldwin is not allowed to be perfect, this is as close as she can get. She and her team should be celebrated for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Nope? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Miniger?
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11435, and this resolution is a corrective action plan for the one recommendation we did receive in the 2023 audit review. In summary, it was suggested that we tighten up the internal accounts payable between the police and the DCS. It was recommended that the procedure for charging and billing off-duty police services be reviewed. And this corrective action plan addresses that recommendation through simple changes. That will do exactly that. I move to adopt this resolution.
My second. Council comments?
What I would ask for this one, Ms. Baldwin, is that would it be possible to have a copy of the, I know we have the basic, you know, we're gonna fix it, but can we have a copy of the actual plan? Whenever you think it's, whenever you're gonna solve it?
Through you, Council President. The document you have for the resolution is what I'm required to send to the state. What myself and the finance team is working on is backtracking to the old, we believe that there are accounts receivable on a spreadsheet that were already accounted for and not deleted. There's a spreadsheet we work with between police and finance, and it's shared. And these are items going back to 2018, 2019, when there was a previous account clerk working in the position. And I think that they just didn't delete. So I have to go back and research and find proof that they were paid, which I think I will in most cases, which will bring that spreadsheet into alignment with my general ledger.
I think my concern is when we do, you know, when we do an American, New Jersey American Water Project or PSENG Project, it doesn't matter, but when the capital projects involve the police, that's where, when we are approving an amount of a project and we're not including the police coverage, it just becomes very confusing for us.
So I may not know that the off-duty charges are in that contract award. I'd have to defer to Director Schreger to know whether the award, whether it's a... So sometimes the contractor is paying the police, but when it's a city job that we could do, like if it's PSENG or it's New Jersey American Water, somebody like that, they're paying the off-duty and they're paying different rates. When it's a city job, it's more prudent and can serve fiscally responsible for us to pay the off-duty directly. And they, the amounts that are projected when we do our capital presentations do include enough to award the actual contract for, let's say, the paving job and for the amount of off-duty that you expect to spend during that job.
I just think it'd be helpful for me, as I look through all these things, if it's a big project, we sort of know the number of man-hours that it's gonna, you know, employee hours on the job it would take. And I know, like, right now, we have 100, I think we have 125,000 budgeted for off-duty police hours, and we haven't used any of that so far, correct?
Not yet.
For a couple of projects? So just sort of getting an update as we go through the progress, as we go through the process would be helpful from, I guess, if we can...
I think probably collectively, we could provide that for you.
One question along that line, Council President. Aaron, do we include a line item for traffic control for police in the construction projects?
Through you, Council President. No, we do not. We actually, at the start of a project, we encumber the money directly to the capital account for the project, and then we issue the payment. But our specification does say they're responsible for the scheduling and we'll pay them unless they make an error in the scheduling and it requires charges. Then we will put them on a change order that they have to pay for that, so.
Okay. And does that get charged to police overtime? Because sometimes police overtime looks inflated because of these projects, and it's really...
No, I'm almost positive they're billing my accounts pretty well.
Okay, got it. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council comments?
Council President? And I'm sorry, I conflated the two. I think I jumped a little ahead of myself. Can you tell me what the underlying, underlying cause of the billing discrepancies and why this came up in the audit to begin with? What was the, what was the issue?
Through you, Council President. That was what I was just speaking to. So it looks like, you know, every year when they do an audit, they'll dive deeper into particular areas. They look at everything, and then they'll dive deeper into different areas. So I asked the same question. Why hasn't this come up before? If I'm looking at some old receipts that may, or they may have been paid, and I have to do the research now, going back to even before I was employed with the city, to find out if they were paid and just not removed from this shared spreadsheet we use? Because that's supposed to back up my general ledger, but the amounts are different. My general ledger, I guarantee you, is right. I'm trying to get that spreadsheet that police shares with us to reflect the proper balance, and that's the discrepancy.
That makes sense. Thank you for clarifying. I wasn't sure what you were referring to before when you're talking to Councilperson Hamlet. Last question. Are there any concerns of overruns now?
I don't have any concerns right now. If I do find that there's a bill or two going back, we do have current funds for off-duty that we can charge that to and get that cleaned up. I'm just more sad that I got a recommendation. Three years of that one, but I guess it was my time.
Thank you.
At least we know they're paying attention.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. All right. Any public comments? Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11455, and this resolution authorizes our new Parking Services Director, Nicole Solicki, to draw checks in the petty cash account in the Parking Services Operating Fund, and each of those checks to the City Treasurer. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second. Excellent. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11424, and this resolution extends the original three-year contract with PrimePoint LLC for payroll, human resources, and time and attendance services for one additional year in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $60,000 in that year. This is the first of two, of two optional one-year extensions built into this contract. At this time, our current system meets the needs of the city staff, and so it was recommended to extend the contract by a year. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second. Excellent. Okay. Council comments?
Council President?
Yep.
I just want to make sure, Tammy and I talked about this earlier, but I just want to make sure, this is just a one-year contract with the option for two?
This is, this is a, there's two one-year extensions that were an option of the original contract. We went out, we did the original three years, and they provided us with the option to extend for each of one year. So I would have to put another resolution on this time next year in order to extend that for an additional year if that's the way we choose to go.
If there's not another provider out there that you so choose to, to go with?
Correct.
Okay.
Good. Okay. Wonderful. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Public comment? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Councilman Smallwood.
Actually, Councilmember Hamlet. And I, yeah. We're going to cap.
Okay. We're going to go to cap.
Can I say something? I'll, from backup in finance, I missed something, but in resolution, I think in 11445, there's just a scribner error. Tammy and I talked about it earlier. In her summary memo, it says that the 2022, 2022 audit results were emailed, but it would be 2023.
Right. Through you, Council President. It's not in the resolution, but in the summary memo that I provide, I inadvertently left the 2022 number instead of changing it to 2023. So it's not in the resolution, but it is in the memo.
We should clarify that in the resolution.
Correct.
Okay. Great. Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President Allen. This is ID 11472, which is authorizing the emergency contract of the Tatlock Field Cleanup. The DCS Director Engineer has advised on August 9, 2024, the Tatlock Field House experienced significant water leakage through the roof, and the construction official deemed the building unsafe due to the water leaking through the light fixtures, and the building cannot be used until it is demonstrated that the issues have been fixed. And pursuant to and corresponding rules, NJAC 5346 dot one, the DCS Director of Engineer requests authorization for emergency contract award to First Night Enterprises, DBA Servpro of Central Union County in the amount of $77,566.86, which is in excess of the city's $44,000 bid threshold. So we are requesting for emergency purchases dated August 27, 2024. Here to attach, I'd like to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Excellent. Okay. Council comments?
Go ahead.
You could go first.
No, you go first.
I was just going to, thank you, Council President. I was just going to back this up much further with this project. So I think people have known for many years that this building was not in good shape. So this is a city-owned building, but used primarily by the Board of Education for sports, for school sports. So this is a, you know, normally the Board of Ed would manage their buildings and deal with that. Normally, the city would manage the city buildings, and they would remain pretty separate. This is a weird situation here because it's, it's owned by one, used by the other. So several years ago, the Board of Education agreed to basically take responsibility for it. However, ownership of the building has not been transferred. So that's a little bit of background as to why, basically, we're, the Board of Ed and the city are now both on parallel tracks paying for separate parts of this. The parts that the city is paying for is the mold remediation, which is this $77,000 that will hopefully be through insurance, and then the Board of Education is paying the $270,000 or whatever they had on their agenda a couple of weeks ago. And obviously, my hope is, you know, kids are back in there for the fall sports season in a couple of weeks, but also that, that, you know, we're not going to have all this work done, and then all of a sudden, the Board of Ed tears the whole thing down, right? So we want to keep track of this with, with the Board of Ed and make sure that, that as they're finalizing their plans for the building, that, that it, you know, is not, we're putting all this money into it, and then we flush that down the toilet, right? So that's, that's my thoughts. Yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Smallwood?
Yes. Thank you. And I'm going to echo Councilman Vartan's comments. You know, I'm, I'm a little disappointed that we've actually gotten to this far. You know, if, for whatever reason, our JIF does not reimburse us for the $77,000, that's money that we did not allocate for. And so we're, we're going to have to foot that bill, just simply for cleaning the mold, and so it just, it's, it's safe for our kids to get back into that building. The Department of Education have had plans since, I want to say, mid to late November 2022. I don't know when the actual agreement took place between the City of Summit and the Board of Ed, but I do note there was never an interlocal agreement ever made between the two parties. Within the $37 million bond that the Board of Ed had last year, they allocated $2.5 million to renovate this building. This can has been kicked down the road for way too long, and this is something that we need to take care of, like, right away, so that, for instance, the $77,000 that we're going to have to spend, hopefully will get reimbursed by our JIF. The $218,000 that the Board of Ed just approved a couple of weeks ago for the new roof, you know, it's, this needs to be taken care of. I've been in that building more times than I would like in the past three weeks. It was absolutely disgusting. You know, I have been in the building since Servpro has been in there. It's cleaner. You don't necessarily smell the mold. I'm looking forward to what the hygienist comes through with and making sure that our, the duck work is clean. We do get a clean bill of health from our electric, for state certified for electricity, so that at least, you know, the football season can get back in there for the fall season. But I think going forward, we need to really nail down with an interlocal agreement with the Board of Ed to have something permanently done for this building. When I spoke with one of the DPW guys, when the, the roof started initially leaking several weeks ago after that storm, he basically said the only thing that's good about this building is the four exterior walls. And I, talking to residents that have been in town and have used that building, Mr. Orin, I think you were in that building years ago as a football coach, can attest the fact that this is, you know, when you have, you know, two main programs, our football and our lacrosse teams, that are state championship caliber, going into a locker room where you don't know if they're going to come out with asthma because of the building, the, the condition of the building itself. So this is something that really needs to be a priority, and, you know, there is funding that was allocated for this by the BOE, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get our kids in there before the first football game on Saturday, and then from that point on, we need to really nail down the responsibility of that building and, and really make it nice and safer for our kids.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to be clear that this leak certainly didn't start eight or nine weeks ago. We've been raising the bells on this since January. Feel free to open all of my emails and text messages regarding the field house because this is something that we have been raising alarms about as far as the roof. It's been a problem. It is a problem, and I think that we owe answers. We should be getting answers from the Board of Ed on what is the maintenance schedule for the weekends? Who's replacing the toilet paper? Because I get way too many calls about there's no toilet paper, or there's toilet paper all over the floors, or the door's not open. So I think as we go through this process, if you look at the bathrooms that are at, next to the paddle tennis courts near Wilson, not Wilson, is it Wilson? Yes, Wilson. That roof right now is starting to rot. There's graffiti outside, and I think at some point, we have to take some personal accountability on fixing these small projects before they become much larger ones, to your point, Kevin, so.
Council President, through you. One question. Red flag that Councilman Smallwood had mentioned about interlocal agreement. You have Board of Education using a city building. Is there a certificate of insurance in the event of liability? Because if a child gets hurt there, the city's going to get sued because I'm sure there's buildings on your statement of values on your insurance policy. So it's very important, I don't know whether there is or there isn't, but we should have a certificate of insurance from the Board of Education so that city's protected in the event of an accident.
Thank you.
Mr. Tucci, just, we've just, when we were made aware of this last week, we've already drafted a shared service agreement for city's consideration, then it'll go over to the board, and that, we do address that in that.
It does. Okay, thank you.
For that very reason.
Thank you. Councilman Plasky.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that the Board of Ed's plan to, to renovate this building is really just that. It's just a renovation. They're not going to make it bigger. They're not going to change the layout of it. It's just going to be new stuff in that same building. And I think, I really think we've outgrown it. Right now, it's used for, for football and lacrosse. I think track, maybe cross-country, tennis, but I think we can do better than just renovating it in place. I have lots of ideas, but, you know, I think the fact that we had this emergency, we've replaced the roof, the building is cleaner and drier than I've ever seen it. It was not a great building in 1992 either, other than nostalgia, but, you know, if you go, if you go out behind that building, for example, there's a slope that goes down to a field, right, which is a green space, and I don't think anybody wants to get rid of green spaces. I've heard people talking.
Councilman Plasky, just pull your microphone closer.
I've, I've heard people talking over the past, you know, several weeks about this, and why don't we just build a new building on the field? A bigger building on the field, then we can knock down the old building and make it a parking lot, right? But then we lose space where little kids can go and play football and play. But there's a slope that goes down from the field house, and if you go out there and take a look, you could double the footprint of that building and still have a decent-sized field there. And you could build a floor underneath, and you could build a floor on top, and really quadruple the size of it. Now, the, the Board of Education doesn't have the money for that, at least they haven't bonded for it, but I think we need to, to take a step back and see, especially now that we have a roof and the, and the building's going to be usable. Let's, I don't want to wait too long, but let's not immediately move forward with a plan to just renovate that one area, and let's see if we can do something better. Now, this is, you know, something that I've been hearing from a lot of people, and I'd also like to thank, when this happened, there were a whole bunch of Hilltopper alumni who volunteered, who are in the trades, who volunteered their services to come and help. Ian Paxton came out to look at the roof. I know Jimmy Fleming would have done some electrical. Mark Sheridan kind of brought it all together. So I just want to thank those guys. It was really a heartwarming thing to, to see them come out. It's my understanding we couldn't have let them do it because of various.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage laws, but they were there, you know? Marcus McNamara said he'd paint for us, so, you know, let's let this be something that brings us all together, and, and we can make some big improvements for the future down there.
Council President, I'd just like to add John Calabrese to that, to that list of names.
Yes.
Quick question for our CFO. Tammy, do you know if the Board of Education already bonded money for a renovation, right? And we, as a council, decided that we, we didn't, we wanted to do something different? It's a city-owned property, right? What, what technically would happen to that money that was bonded? Would the Board of Education be able to reappropriate that money to the city? I mean, if it's going for the same purpose, I don't know.
Generally, they cannot. Usually when you have bonds, it's, because remember, bonds, you're putting it out to sale to the general public, and municipal bonds, school bonds, et cetera, and there's a purpose for them. And so you have to stay within the purpose of what the bond was done for. So if it was done for renovations, it's got to be for renovations. Now, you know, if the city decided to add in addition to it, you, they could maybe use part of that money to renovate the existing space, et cetera. But they couldn't repurpose it to go by school buses.
No, no, that, no, my question is, right, if this council decided to do something different with the field house, right, repurposing that money for the same reasons, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the, the bond, and it's, it's somewhat complicated, too, because you're a Board of School Estimates, and so the bonding capacity is actually through the city. You know, your school's unique. There's not too many schools that are, have Boards of School Estimates. Most school districts, when they go out to bond, they go out and it's got to be voter-approved, so the voters have to vote on it. You guys do it through the Board of School Estimates. So we'd have to look at the bond, we'd have to talk to your financial advisor. It really depends on how they were marketed to the, to the general public, because it could, it could affect, you know, the, the value of those bonds. But, you know, we could take a look at that if that's something you guys want to explore.
And just a follow-up. And if the, if the money is not used, right, if we can't use the money, what happens to the bond?
Through you, Council President. So it's similar to the city. If the bonds aren't used, you would cancel the balance, it would go to their surplus, it would offset other, other revenues or, or taxes that they need to raise, much like we do when we have a project that comes in under the cost. We'll cancel that balance if we don't, we, we can reappropriate it. I'm not sure, as Mr. Jacoby laid out, if the school is able to reappropriate, but we can do that, or we can cancel the surplus. I would imagine that they could cancel whatever they don't use and potentially reappropriate, but it depends on the voting.
We'd have to look at how it was done.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Are we confident that we don't need a Plan B on this building? In that, are you going to, yes, go ahead.
Well, I mean, I, I went to the Board of Education meeting the other night and had a conversation with some board members. I don't, you know, I, I, I think we can have a conversation with them to see what the future looks like, and, you know, we, we can take it from there. I, I think the, the main point was to get the football team back in there so that we wouldn't have to have trailers for them, or they have to commute from the high school, and our, the away team would have some issues. It would just create so many issues. So, you know, I'm really appreciative of the job that they did, and, and to alleviate the parents' concerns, hopefully we can get a certificate that says there's no mold and maybe posted or something like that. I know that that was the biggest concern from the parents. They don't want their kids in that building, so if we can have some documentation about that, but.
Our construction office will not allow them to use the building unless it's been certified.
Yes.
If all of the repairs are made.
I've been saying that, yes. Yep, I've been, yeah. So, yeah, I think we, we should have those, those conversations with the Board of Ed. It is a city building, right? So I think we, we need to remember that, but I think we should do something for the future, so.
Thank you. Okay. Public comments? Go ahead.
Don Nelson, NELSON, 20 Plain Street. I want to congratulate the City of Summit and the Board of Ed for solving this problem. What I'm really concerned about is how did we get to this point, though? Somewhere along the line, hopefully somebody complained, and nothing was done. Accountability is a big thing. I know this was an issue going back several years, so you guys are kind of like coming into this at the tail end, but why wasn't something, if it's a city building, a Board of Ed building, who really cares? I know it boils down to budgets and all that kind of stuff and who has the money, but at the end of the day, we can't use the building because it doesn't function the way it's supposed to, there's mold in it, the whole deal. So if somebody says there's a roof leaking, why wasn't somebody paying attention to that? I'm glad we came to a good conclusion here, but now what's going to happen? So if we traded, if we, if we swap deeds with the, with the Board of Ed, now it becomes their problem. If we're talking about plans moving forward, maybe we shouldn't swap the deed with the Board of Ed if we want to do something different. I'm just, I'm just speaking out loud here, but what I'm really concerned about is how did we get to this point? Why did nobody listen to someone who said there's a problem with that building, and we just let it go to where, to where we are today? So, I'm not asking for an answer. I just want something that we need to think about moving forward, we need to have accountability, and I always say, if you don't follow the rules, you set new rules. So in this case, somebody complained, nothing was done, and here we are. All right, thanks.
Thank you. It's okay.
Give me a couple extra minutes, that's great. Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. So in 1994, I was an athletic trainer for some of the people here in this room, and that fieldhouse was disgusting. So Adam Fern, he taught me a lot, I rode the bus with these football players, I was in that locker room. Nothing had changed for years, and I look at that fieldhouse, and it just sat there. Memorial Field tennis courts are horrible, mentioned it at a Board of Ed meeting, they're like rubber. You can't play tennis on it. Any real tennis player goes there and says, "These are garbage courts." Tatlock is amazing, totally different material. Why do the tennis players have to go to Memorial to play tennis? Why couldn't that tatlock complex be made so we can have the athletes play there? Why couldn't we have more courts there? Why are there only limited amount of courts that are actually quality courts that these athletes can play on? I asked Mark, why does Memorial have courts like that, that these athletes are playing on? Good question, right? Now, Board of Ed, $37 million later, has only allocated so much for that fieldhouse to not even be fit for our new flag football athletes, who are girls to be playing out of, or our women lacrosse players, or our tough track athletes. You know, there's so many athletes that could be using that space out of, there's not enough parking on Butler Parkway. Our, our Butler Parkway residents complain there's not enough parking, so why can't we use that entire, look at the entire space and say, what can we do out of there? You know, going to Board of Ed meetings, they don't answer you. They look at you like, "Thank you for your comment." Well, guess what? It's time to look at the entire space and say, what can we do out of that? Do not give them that fieldhouse. Stop right now and say, "Okay, we need to take it back. Let's use it for, for football right now, but let's use that space and think, this is for our athletes." I was an athlete there, a lot of us were athletes there, right? Jamel, he was a football player when I was taping up his feet, gross as they are. Let's take it back and let's make something great out of it now. Let's raise the money, we have the money. Great athletes are here in something. Let's raise the money, we can use it, we don't have to just use our tax-paying dollars, but I guarantee, we all use our heads together, we can raise the money and make it great while we can. Do not let it go to waste, I promise you, we can make it great. And put parking in, please.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet, your second resolution.
Thank you, Council President, this is Resolution 11434, which will award the bid traffic signal replacements on Springfield Avenue and Maple Street, Springfield Avenue and Beechwood Road. In accordance with the City Treasurer's Certification of Availability of Funds, a copy of which is attached and made a part of this resolution, and as recommended in a memo from the Director of Department of Community Services, bids received by the purchasing agent on Tuesday, July 30th, 2024 shall be awarded to the lowest responsive responsible bidder. And that would be Tiffany Electric at the amount of $768,220.46. I would like to move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Council comments?
Sorry to throw a ringer at this point in the evening, but can we pull up the bids on the computer screen? Director Schreger, can you pull up the agenda on the screen? Sorry, it's easier for, I feel like everybody needs to see to follow, like to follow along.
I have it here, but where do I pull it up over there?
How do you, how do we get it up there, Rosie, is there a way to do that?
It's not off-script and I'm failing, I'm sorry.
You have to send it to me, I don't, it's, it's all in the packet. Yeah, you have to, what's on?
It's okay, it's, if you can't, it's just, it's in the packet, so I didn't know if we could pull up the packet on there. So I guess my question is, and maybe this goes to Mr. Jacoby or Mr. Tucci, because I'm not the best at this, but what defines mathematically unbalanced? Because a very layman's view of this, and I was just talking to Director Schreger about this earlier, it seems to me that this bid is mathematically unbalanced, and I would, I'm hoping that somebody can prove to me why it's not. To give you a couple of examples, in this specific bid, there was three, there was three bids. The lowest bid, if you look at specific line items, number 11, which is paving, number 20, which is granite block curb, number 42, which is the traffic signal cable to conductor, there's a price of a cent, a price of a cent and a price of a cent, and then portable traffic signal for two items. So my concern is, are we going to build it in the contract that they have found a way to include those in the bid? Or are they going to come back and say, "We had the scope wrong"? Or are they going to come back and say 20%? Because the other two bids in those items seemed more appropriate. And I understand there's the front-loading, I understand unbalanced, but if somebody can just, and, and they also-
Are you talking about unbalanced just with the discrepancy in, in the, in the values of the total bids?
Just-
I'm looking at 768 for Tiffany, 983 for JC Contracting, and 1.1 million 58,000 for Zakara. Is that what you're talking about?
Right. So basically, I'm saying, do the dollar amounts with one cent, the items that I just identified, does that represent that they're not including it? Are they saying that we don't have the scope right? Because those are items that have to be included in the project.
No, no, so, right, right here, so like breakaway barricade drum, traffic cone, they're charging you $1 for them, these are items that they reused.
I'm not too worried about those.
Yeah, okay.
I'm worried about the more specific items that I know don't cost a cent, which is traffic signal, you can't find that for a cent.
Right.
The more important items that were appropriately, with the other bidders at 64,000, 60,000, you know, again, I understand that this is a, this is the way this works sometimes, but-
Well, no, but it could be, so for example, let's just use like portable traffic signal, you're talking about those two. These two bidders here are charging 64 or 60 because they're going to rent them. It could be that Tiffany owns them already, because they do a lot of this work, and can utilize their own without having to rent them out. So, I mean, right here, if this, the bid's been reviewed, you have to go with the lowest responsible bidder, and, you know, I think that it's a substantial savings, I mean, literally, it's more than $200,000 between the first and second bidder.
So, I guess, Mr. Tucci, through you, Council President, if I can ask you this question. So, when, when we write the contractor, we are saying that this contractor has identified all of the labor, equipment, and materials to, to accomplish this job, like that would seem to suffice.
And I believe there's a performance bond attached to this.
Correct.
The, the danger that you run into, and I'm not saying that it's happening in this instance, is when a contractor frontloads, that means he puts all the early items and charges you exorbitant amount, and charges you little on the back end. The danger is that if he ever walks away from the project, he already has his money and he's gone, and you're stuck holding the bag. That's, but I'm not saying that that's the case here, as a solicitor said, here's a $200,000 savings here, so, and Tiffany has been an experienced electrical contractor for many, many years, and, you know, they've done this, I've seen them do it in numerous, numerous towns, so.
My-
But I understand your concern, Councilwoman, it is a serious concern, when you start seeing one penny outline items, especially like on, glee, there's aggregate there for one penny.
Right.
That's an item where they don't own that piece of equipment, they have to go out and get it. Obviously, it doesn't cost one penny.
Unless they have supply in their supply yard and they have access.
They have an abundance.
But I can tell you, I thi, I think right now, just looking at the, the two big items, I mean, just to give you an idea, clearing site, they're at 75,000, JC was at 85, Zakara's at 25. So, you know, clearing site is, is, is more work. My guess is the big discrepancy, the $64,000 and 60,000 that JC and Zakara have are for the portable traffic control signals, and they're charging $1, they probably own portable traffic signals and can allocate them for the site without having to go out and running them from like United Rental.
Council President-
That right there would be 120, that's $128,000 or to $120,000, just delta just on the two traffic, temporary portable traffic control signals.
Council President, can I ask Director Schreger a question? So, I, I think my concern here would be that they underbid, and then you start seeing change orders, right? And then they catch up to the other bids. So they underbid to get the project, right? And then when they get the project, you start seeing change orders come in. Now, Director Schreger, you keep an eye on this stuff, right? So if you start seeing change orders and things of that nature, that's something that's reportable, correct?
Yes, through you, Council President, and I think, just to be fair, or maybe unfair to contractors, is whether they're overbid or underbid, they're always looking to get a change order to make more money, that's just how it works. So, obviously, if, if they've underbid and, and what they've left money on the table, as they will refer to sometimes, yes, it is something you should watch for, which is why we will have construction oversight during it, but in the end, they still have to provide the, the product, which is, provided in the specs, specifications and plans that they've bid on, and they're essentially legally bound to build it to that scope. To further Mr. Jacoby's comment, which I agree with and I think is correct, we don't know how hungry these three contractors are, so Tiffany, even if they are renting the equipment, they decided to, to bid $1, and maybe they're just going to eat that cost, maybe they get an incredible deal, likely they own it, or maybe they're assuming they can get away without doing it, which they can't because it's in the plans and specs. So ultimately, there's no change order for that, they have to provide it. And, and the most likely answer is that they do physically own that equipment, I mean, they are a, a traffic contractor, so electrical contractor, so that's the likely scenario. And if you threw that together, that brings their bid closer to the engineer's estimate and closer to the second bidder, and I think then it might not look as, as funny, so. But it's definitely something we want to be aware of, because you do have front-loading, and you also have, in the traffic signal world right now, material is taking so long to get, but they have to pay upfront, so they are going to play some games in their bid, because they have to pay upfront, it might be six, 12, 18 months before they get the equipment, so they're kind of playing a game a little bit too, so.
But it's, it's not legal to underbid, and then, at the end of the project, they are 200,000, they've caught up to the, the highest bidder, right? So there's something that the city keeps an eye on, correct?
Well, change orders is going to only be, they can't exceed a 20%. So, that's the maximum under the law. So 20, you know, 20, even if you had change orders, at 20% for the 768, it's still less than the second bid at 983. But you would never have change orders, and again, you have performance bonds on, on this, you know, this is a, a big job, so that, you know, you got, there's a lot of protections, and as Aaron said, the change orders are generally done for, you know, unanticipated things. They, they dig down into the dirt and they find out that there's 12 feet of bedrock that they now have to jackhammer and blast out to put in the traffic signal. Well then, that was something that was unforeseen. You'll see a lot of times when they do, when they're doing building repairs, they come across all the asbestos pipes, and they have to do asbestos abatement, it was unforeseen, it was behind walls. So, but under, under, you know, New Jersey law, you have to go with the, the least expensive, most competitive bid from the responsible bidder. And Tiffany definitely has done this work literally all over the state, they're, they're a known entity in the traffic signal control, so, you know, we can't pick and choose, say, "Well, we think they got it wrong." Because, guess what, if they get it wrong, then that wasn't, you know, they lose money in this job.
And it's, it's through, through you, Council President, but, but yes, to, to your, you know, concern, really, obviously would, if they've bid a penny on wire, they're going to sit there and try to use as little wire as possible, but the quantity they bid on is what we feel is needed for them to build it the right way. The numbers are going to go up and down just because of the way the field changes, but not drastically, and not for them to try to change that, nor can they come and say, you know, "We were wrong, it, it's not a penny, it's actually five." They can't do it without an unforeseen condition that would warrant and justify legally how they could do that, so.
I think in the end, we just want to make sure that the city has an eye on this project, that's all, right? So-
Yep, absolutely.
Council President, I have three quick thoughts. Number one is, we need the new signals, nobody's saying we don't need the new signals. So, the bidder is responsible, so we have to go with them, and I don't think anybody's actually advocating that we spend more money, so I want to change the subject, which is number three. All the traffic signals in the downtown, except for these few, are green. These ones are much older and are silver and ugly. I am publicly going out on a little bit of a limb here and saying, I think we should get black ones moving forward. We, the rest of the downtown, this is going to take, this is going to be something that if we commit to doing, is going to take many, many, many years, because we're not going to need to replace the other ones for a while. But when we do want to replace the other ones, I think black is sharper, I think it looks nicer, I think it fits with the theme of our small-town feel, and I don't really like the color green. So, that's, that's where I am on it, and I think, you know, we're 18, 12, 18 months out from seeing these get installed anyway, right? So I think we have a long time to get people starting to think this would be a cool, better, sharper-looking downtown. Thank you.
Can you paint them? Can you paint the other ones?
I knew I was going to ruin your night with this.
No, well, there's, we have a lot of traffic signals throughout town, and yes, they're either green if they've been replaced and they're new, or, or if they're older, they're, they're silver in some capacity, so. Could they be painted? Yes, at a significant cost, because you, you just can't go up there and just paint it with a brush, so essentially you'd be taking the signal down. I can share that possibly 10 years ago, SDI did visit this issue of changing all of their lighting downtown to black, and kind of hit the same snag where it's like, it's not cheaper to replace everything, but you're getting close to it, because really the way to do it properly is to take it off the footing, bring it somewhere, sandblast it, and repaint it. So, there, there has been, let's switch to black, you know, discussions in the past. Green is just the way it's always been.
Right.
It's something we could, we could definitely switch to if we wanted to, but that would be then setting the city on the course of black fixtures and, and traffic lights moving forward. So, and if you like the village green, I believe those are black, are they? Not, so, yes, so.
Okay.
Council President-
Councilwoman Hamlet.
Just to, just to respond though, real quick, you know, the color, great bid, lowest, I get it, but we shouldn't dismiss Councilwoman Hamlet's concerns, and thank you for raising them, right? These are the questions that we should ask about the bidding process, what's fair in making sure that our, our city is, has their eyes on the project, and so that we are properly allocating taxpayer money. So, thank you for raising it.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Mr. Tucci. Through you, Council President. Is this mathematically unbalanced? If you say it's not, then I'm okay, but if you, if you've looked at this, and we have a memo that says, "This is not mathematically or materially unbalanced."
It, it is an unbalanced bid, but technically, it's, it's allowed under the bidding law.
Right.
The real concern that I have is if it's front-loaded or not, because that puts-
It is front-loaded.
That puts the city on, in an awkward position, and I agree with Councilman Fortan, it should be black.
Thank you.
I think that's my, my concern, is that it is front-loaded. It is front-loaded. And again, I know they're the lowest, they're probably great, but it's unbalanced and it's front-loaded.
Tiffany is a very reputable firm.
Can I, through you, Council President, can I ask what we're actually advocating? Are you actually advocating that we, that we reject it?
No, I just-
And then pay more?
No, I want to know, I want to know for the taxpayers, is this mathematically unbalanced? Just if someone gives me an answer, and then when they come back and they say, "Hey, we spent $85,000 on mobilization costs," and then they start kicking the can down the road, and they get this windfall of other things that they found that might be more, I guarantee you, if we hadn't brought this up, their number probably was going to be just, just about as close to that second bid. Look at the change orders tonight for the firehouse, for Hobart-
The change orders can only be up to 20%, so it would only ever-
You're missing the, you're missing the point, it's not the point.
But I, I guess my question is, are you, are you suggesting we should vote against it?
I think that we need our professionals to tell us whether it's unbalanced and front-loaded, and then we can make a decision. And I know you just got here, so I'm sorry.
I can't, I can't say it's, it's front-loaded. Is it unbalanced? Yes. Front-loaded, I'd have to look at it a lot closer.
And just so people-
Depending upon what the sequence of the operation is.
Unbalanced is that, it's the way that monies were allocated within the bid. You know, their mobilization is higher than the other two, they're clearing the sites higher, but then other things. I mean, I think at the end of the day, what you have to do with a bid is, you award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, and then you hold them accountable, and you make sure that Aaron and his team goes over any change order. So for example, if they say, "Oh-" So for example, if they say, oh, you know, the set hole, the set manhole castings, we bid it at $500, but it really should be $1,000. Too bad, that's not a change order, you're not entitled to do it. So we have, we have a lot of controls. Getting a change order is basically asking permission from Aaron to agree to it. And if Aaron says, no, that was part of the original bid, you, you price it out, we're not doing it, that, too bad, so sad, they lose.
All right, so I would ask, I'm sorry, Councilman Plasky, hold on one second. So change orders do have to go through a process?
Absolutely. They can't do a change order.
Right.
Mr. Schrager and his team have to approve a change order. And generally, so give you an example, the firehouse, just give you one example. They did the whole thing, they did, the change order that you, that is, one of the change orders was, New Jersey Transit said, you need to pay one of our engineer, an engineer out there with red signals if you get close to the wires. That was unforeseen. No one knew that you needed to have a New Jersey Transit signal man out on the train tracks with a red flag.
Right.
That was a change order.
Right.
But that has to be approved. We had to approve that to get the job done, et cetera, and we'll deal with who's responsible for paying that. Here, you know, putting in the traffic signals, we know how many posts they need, we know how many lights they need, we need another conduit. That's not where they're going to have the change orders. Usually, change orders are, are something that's unforeseen.
Right.
So in this instance, they're going to have a hard time getting change orders because the, the specs that went with this are fairly detailed about where they're going, the size, the location, the height was required. I, I think that, you know, a lot of this is also equipment. If you look at the, the different things that are being set forth here, junction boxes, I don't mean, I don't know, I don't know anything about electricity, but I can just tell you, looking at this, looks like a lot of, a lot of the big expenses are the actual manufactured lighting and poles and equipment. And if you look, they're pretty, they're pretty close all the way through, all of them. So, you know, my feeling, my recommendation would be, I would award it, because I think if you reject this and go back out, you're going to spend more money, I think you're a better, you're in a stronger position to award it, because even if they got 20% change orders, which they're not going to get 20% change orders, but even if they did, that would be about $160,000. 768 plus 160 is still less than the next bid at 983. So even if you did all 20% change orders, this is still cheaper.
Okay. But I just wanted to recognize that the change orders do happen. I mean, we looked at Oxbow for $60,000. So I don't know, when you compare the different projects, what gets, what is front-loaded on any project? So I guess that would be my question. So change orders happen, they have to go through a process, but they do occur. So I don't, my question to you is, what is the concern for this particular project versus any project that we bid out? Because they all go out to bid.
For, for me, it's the mobil, it's, the equipment's not included, and the mobilization is high at the front end. And then, again, do they have the time, labor, and material all included? Because they're missing the big pieces. So they could walk away after that 80 grand, with no equipment, no traffic signals, I mean.
And you have, and you have a performance bond, you call the bonding company and they finish the job.
For free?
For the, for the contract.
Got it. Okay, that's it. For not extra, is what I'm saying.
And I just sort of looked at all this in last.
I'm going to go to Councilman Plasky first, because he raised his hand, and then I'll come back to you.
So first of all, there's no better color than green, Greg. So.
I like the pink.
I don't doubt that we need new traffic lights, but those lights seem to work. Why do we need new traffic lights?
Through you, Council President, so those are the third and fourth oldest traffic signal that we do have in town. So right now, we don't have the ability to, they don't have, they're not pedestrian-activated. They don't, they have the countdown heads, but they don't meet any current standards. As we go to replace them, it's getting harder and harder to find parts. We'd like to make them smart signals so they talk to each other. So even if you could overhaul everything, you get to the point where it's just not cheaper to do that as opposed to replacing them, though this is by no means a bargain to replace them. But, you know, in terms of making them generator-ready, having a better backup system, it's, it's just time to, to bring them, they're, they're 30-plus years old, so.
Okay. Could we hook one of those up in my basement?
The signal itself, or?
The old ones.
Oh, the old ones?
Yeah.
You could bid for them on govdeals.com when we auction them off?
Somebody wants to buy them, okay.
Yes.
Good enough.
Councilman Smallwood.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to take a little thing from, from Greg, and I, I have three things. One, I'm in the wrong business, because if I could charge $700,000 for lights, I would do it. Two, I, I don't really care what colors, what color they are, like, as long as the yellow, green, and red lights work. I know that in this intersection, Maple Street and Springfield, as well as Beechwood and Springfield, at 11 o'clock, those lights go yellow. On, on Springfield, they're flashing yellow, on Maple, it's flashing red, on Beechwood, they're flashing red. Currently, right now, and I'm, I'm assuming this is one of the reasons why we need to replace the one at Maple Street and Springfield, is because I actually recorded it, it's a red with a flashing yellow light. So I, I wasn't quite sure if I needed to stop, or if I should just go with caution. I decided to stop.
It's use your discretion.
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, are we just replacing the traffic signal, or are we also replacing the crosswalk signals as well?
Through you, Council President, so it would be every component of the traffic signal system. So yes, it would be the, the buttons you hit, it would be the countdown timers, it would be the physical posts, the mast arms, the signal heads, the controller boxes, which I think they're both in the southeast corner of the intersections, but yes, every part of it would be essentially removed and replaced. So you could really compare it to the signals on the forest, which are probably getting close to eight or nine years right now. Those were replaced by the city, and if you saw what those were prior, they look similar to what is currently downtown, so.
Okay. Thank you.
My last comment is just on the finances of this. In the memo, it says NJDOT will reimburse the city 75% of the cost. The true number for this project, correct Director Schrager, is about $1 million. And then the remaining, it says here, the remaining 25% will be reimbursed at the conclusion of the project. So NJDOT is 484, City of Summit is on the hook for the remainder.
Correct, yes.
Right, so through our capital budget. So I believe the bond number was a little bit off, I spoke with the CFO this morning about it, but just so you understand that the, again, the police costs aren't included in that, the, the design costs were included in that, so it's, it's larger than 778, it's almost a million-dollar project.
At what point do we get that information that's missing?
So I, I could take it through you, Council President, well, you are Council President, so just to you. There is a lot of, of soft costs in all these projects. So when we present a capital budget to the governing body, that includes that. So we're taking construction costs, design costs, inspection costs, and yes, some of those we do in-house at times when we have staff availability and the capability to do so, to save some money, and the police as well, so. And then what we produce, we just did one recently, and we're working to get them out, is at the conclusion of a project, you could actually see, you know, what was budgeted, what was costs, cost, including the soft costs, you can see the project total, so.
And that includes Section 20?
Yes. So, so what is, what we request in the capital budget is to cover everything. And then what, there could be 20 to even 30, 40% more based on soft costs, depending on what police coverage you need, or what design work is needed, or if there's permitting. But here, it would, it would probably be close to, you know, $900,000 total when we're done, yeah.
Okay.
But we're getting a $484,000 grant for this, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And that won't reach the highest bidder? That, that final total, when you just said around $900,000?
No, so, well, that's including the soft costs. So construction costs, you know, likely will go up or down somewhat. I mean, we're not going to be perfect with the exact distance or length of wire that we specified, but yes, construction should stay somewhere in there, or it could go as high as 20%, higher. We hope not, or we don't think so.
Okay.
And then this is in addition to it, so. So that, those soft costs would be whether we award the highest bidder or the lowest bidder, the soft costs are going to be added to that cost.
Okay, okay. All right. Councilman Hamlet, or Councilwoman?
Anything else to say?
All right. Any other comments? Okay. Count, uh, public comments? I was going to say community comments. All right. I'm going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We are going to table.
No, we're on number.
Number three?
Three.
Aren't we tabling that? I had written down.
Number three?
Excavator.
Okay, sorry, number three.
Thank you, this is Resolution 11402, whereas, under the authority of NJSA 52346.2, the City of Summit is permitted to join national cooperative purchasing agreements. The Superintendent of Public Works requests approval for the purchase of one new 2024 E35 24HP R2 series Bobcat Mini excavator as a multi-use machine for the DPW equipment inventory. The amount of this Bobcat is $52,081.36, which will be purchased through Sourcewell Contract. I would like to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Sorry, I'm just moving through here, I apologize. This resolution, number 11426, as discussed in closed session, sorry, will be to appoint Stephanie Solios as the Municipal Housing Liaison Officer effective August 9. I would like to move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
Did that without anything in front of me.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Councilwoman Hamlet.
Thank you, this is Resolution ID 11440, as discussed in closed session, this will declare a vacancy in the Division of Public Works in the Recreation Parks and Shade Tree Unit. I would like to, as a maintenance worker, I would like to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We just want to announce that we didn't skip this over, we're just tabling it.
Yes.
Just, number five.
So the resolution number five, I'm, I'm, don't have.
11433.
Okay, 114, okay, there we go. 11433 is going to be tabled, and Councilwoman Hamlet.
I think she's done.
She's done. Wait, why do I have a mixed up?
We're on safety.
Okay, safety. Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11431, authorizing the purchase of one 2024 Chevy Tahoe. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Great. Council comments? Public comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we're going to vote on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any resolutions they'd like to pull out?
I have one.
Okay.
Actually, I guess I have two.
Do you want to?
Uh, 11, I didn't.
Well, let me, do I have a motion to approve the consented, well, no.
You can. Give it a second, and then before you vote.
And then we can talk about it. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to pull out 11436, 11428, and 11384.
11436?
All three, number two, three, and four in the cap.
Okay.
And 11450, sorry.
Okay. Can you tell us why?
Can you repeat the last one, please?
So it's 11450, 11436, 11428, and 11384. My apologies. If we can start with, through you, Council President, 11436? Yep. So this is the odor, delivery of odor chemicals, so I guess Director Schrager, you can give a better discussion, explain this to the public, my concern with this, and I know, I know the patent expired on biocide, but we have an issue on Park Avenue where the sewer smell is coming into a certain community, and the entire neighborhood smells like sewage. And we recently found out that there's a vent down there that vents out the sewage smell. That was broken, but my, I guess my question, Director Schrager, is how do we fix this problem down on Park Avenue? What, what do you recommend?
Yes, through you, Council President. So the odor has been, you know, intermittently noticeable there for, for literally decades, and it's something that we feel has vastly improved since we have switched to a better odor treatment process, which is currently, this is a chemical called bioxide, which in itself is pretty benign, but it does effectively treat sewage. Your sewage odors that are created generally a result of, of two things, heat, a high temperature within the sewage itself, or, you know, the, the formation of sledge, if you're holding sewage, which the city and its partners do, do not currently. So it's likely just a result of, of the heat in a system that is older, so you do have some buildup along the sewer line. So previously, we had just used a sodium hypochloride, just a drip system, it was very just outdated antiquated system where it just literally just dripped continuously. So we have, over the last few years, switched to this, this system, which is a monitored, you know, introduction of bioxide into the line at our pump stations to, to combat the odor itself. So we've had a lot of success where we do get caught off guard sometimes, is just when you have the high temperatures, like this summer, when we had heat for quite a while without rain, where the rain will assist in kind of flushing the lines, it, it did creep up on us a little bit. So we've put a process in place to just know where we could just increase the dosage more rapidly for that, but we also, based off of this summer, will be like doubling or tripling just the hot months, just to start with regardless. And then as it goes into the colder months, we do actually taper down quite a bit. You're trying to use as much as possible to treat it, but not so much that we're just, you know, blowing through a budget because it's not a free chemical by any means, so. We had a contract for two years, which we then renewed, it had a two-year renewal, so we're entering year four of this product. So we are going back, we're requesting to go back out to bid to get the purchase and delivery of this product once again. It is a specified product, which is called bioxide, which may have lost its patent, so we might get other options, which could, you know, the, the good side is that that might result in a cost savings, but it could result in a product we're not familiar with. But we hope our specs are tight enough to get us something that's at least approved equal to what we're currently using, so. So yes, this should help. Councilmember Hamlet had referred to that we do have a sewer vent that was damaged, since it does just look like a white four-inch PVC pipe. Likely, it was never reported, I can't say when it was knocked down, we're working to get that restored, but that will help with some of the odor when it does release, because it has a filter on tap to treat the odor, so. So.
Question.
Yep.
Through you. Is there a permanent solution rather than treating? Like, to change, if you changed the line, you made the line bigger or a newer line rather than to an older line, rather than continuing to treat it with chemicals, a one-time solution to solve the issue? Is that a possibility? And I know it probably could cost a lot, but just want to throw that out there.
Right. Now, through you, Council President, that's a good question. So, I could share, we are, we do have some users, and I don't want to publicly call them out, that we are investigating, that have some systems in place that we're not fully sure of, nor are they actually, so that we are poking around at them. I know I can say, we observed a few months back at 3:00 in the morning, there was a manhole in a location, it'll remain anonymous, that did have high flows and a hot flow, which definitely would contribute to it. So, we've been meeting with those users to try to see if that's, that would be something more permanent. That's not to say even a brand-new line, if it's hot like that, you likely, it's a natural byproduct of the sewage conveyance and treatment process. So. But, yeah, we will be looking at more permanent things that could help reduce the frequency. It'll never be zero, but we will be looking at that as well.
Yeah, I look forward to having a discussion with you on that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Hamlet?
That was, that was it.
That's it?
I have other, just on that one.
Just on that one?
Yeah.
Council President, I just, I just had one thing that was in the, in the budget packet. And it was for a 2024 Ford Bronco. And it looks like this is, it says works. Director Schreger, do you know what the purpose of this vehicle is for, other than driving it?
Yes, through you, Council President. That is a replacement vehicle for what is identified as DCS 210, which is a, believe a 2001 Ford Explorer. So, it's just a replacement in the fleet. Why a Bronco versus other vehicles? Quite simply, we use the Morris County Co-op, and whatever SUV they have is generally what we purchase. Some years, it's an Escape, some years, it's an Explorer. This happened to be a Bronco year, so that was the purchase that was made. So, yeah. So, it's a replacement for the DCS Engineering Department.
Just a question. Have we ever looked at, like, purchasing vehicles from, let's say, one of the rental car dealerships like Budget or something like that? I mean, I know they have cars that they sell after people are done with them, or whatever they're 15, you know, $16,000, as opposed to Brian New. There may be some benefit to buying a $40,000 car, keeping it for a long time. I don't know. But I'm just thinking about costs.
Yes, through you, Council President. So, the city has, especially with some specialized equipment in the past, I can't say for certain if they actually did. I just know in the current economy where you have used vehicles, they're almost as, not as expensive, but are not a bargain anymore, that this is generally what happens. And plus, you know, especially when you get to public works, the abuse that the vehicles take, this is a natural occurrence, that to start kind of halfway through a vehicle's life will just add to the repair costs and the maintenance of it. So, like, for example, pickup trucks, which are not cheap on the used market right now, when you start plowing snow in them, that vehicle life is going to just, you know, go down rapidly, which is unfortunate part of living in the Northeast. But, so, so, yes, we have, but not in this instance. No. So, yeah.
Councilman Boyer, is there a resolution in here for that, that you were just inquiring about?
It's a bill, yeah.
It's a bill. It's a part of the package.
Oh, on the bill list.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Because I'm familiar with the Ford Broncos, and they don't have a lot of space in them. So, I don't know what you'd be able to put in it from a, like, how usable is it? You know?
Yes, no, through you, Council President. So, for the DCS Engineering and generally DCS, since they are out in the, they're not hauling a lot of materials, you know, they're able to take, especially like if it's engineering that uses it, it's really just shovels and pickaxe and some cones in the back. And if anything, the seats are needed more for transportation of people than actually goods. But it's comparable to an Escape, which is generally what the fleet's kind of moved to over the last few years. But if it was for something for like public works, then, yes, they might want something larger, or more like a pickup truck, which has less capability to transport bodies, but more space to just haul materials and goods. So. But I agree, it's not the largest SUV. And if you look at the Morris County Co-op that we purchased it from, I believe they're called mid-size or small-size SUVs. So.
And these vehicles are stored on the lot? Are they, are they driven home?
No, they're stored, DCS vehicles are either in the backlot or up front. So, and then, obviously, get a lot of use just during their natural life, I guess.
Thank you, Director.
Okay. Did you have any other, you had the other three?
Three others. So, this is ID 11428, the Hobart Avenue Sidewalk Project. Director Schreger, I didn't get to look at this one. So, I guess for those of you here up on the dais and those in the audience, it looks like a change order of about $2,400. But today, right before the meeting, as I was looking at this, as I should have probably asked him last week, a couple of questions that I had on this one are, we initially, there was a fire hydrant there. I'm assuming we decided we did not have to relocate that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, we got a credit for $7,500. But my questions are, why did we go from four-inch sidewalk to six-inch? And then, did we have to put that Belgium block apron in there? Because at 300, 300, is that, I'm not sure, it doesn't say if that's what type that is. I forget in the initial bid if it was square yard or linear. But we added $5,600 worth of concrete, $1,000 of hot mix asphalt, six-inch concrete for sidewalk, and 6,500 of Belgium block. But then, we removed the fire hydrant. And I'm just trying to understand what happened.
So, through the absent Council President, there's, I mean, this just kind of highlights how projects go, where in this case, you know, changes that were made to not have to relocate the fire hydrant resulted in additional sidewalk. I know during this project as well, there was also some extension of the sidewalk towards the arboretum that wasn't in the plans. So, obviously, while we're there, if we had money in the capital account to go up a few dollars was worth it. And I think that went through a prior CAPS committee, just that it was going to happen. But, but in general, just, you know, going up 2% is kind of too big expected at a time when there's generally always something unforeseen, but we try to reduce it.
So, we basically added more sidewalk than initially planned? And then, that's why the concrete, the sidewalk number was more in the Belgium block?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Fair enough. And then, the last one was 11384. My concerns with this change order was the soil contamination on that project? And I was, I did receive some things from you, like, right as I was sitting down. But has Boswell sent us the final inspection report? Was it Boswell or Collier?
Boswell oversaw, well, through the empty chair. Boswell did provide the construction oversight during that. So, yes, so, we do have their inspection reports from the day-to-day that highlight some of what's happened here.
Is there a reason that they haven't sent us the final report?
No, if we, maybe I misunderstood, I apologize. But I had sent you just the soil report. Their inspection reports, I didn't send over, but I could have.
If you could do that after the meeting, that would be great. I'm not 100% comfortable without getting the Boswell report, but I trust that we have it, and it will, you know, obviously. I just think it's important to have the entire report. We pay them a lot of money to do the survey, scope, and things like that.
Y'all set?
I am. I had one final question to Chief Evers on your change order. Without looking at it, through you, Council President, my question, Chief, is there was five or so smaller change orders that had the RFI request in them? Are we billing any of that back to, they were pretty clear, right? There was, there was pretty clear things that were missing that seemed to have not been identified in the scope. So, are we getting a credit back for those items?
Yeah, good, President. There is one credit back, so there's change order 12 through 16, the first one, the hydrant credit, that's credit back to us. The rest of these are all this parts of the building that we had to add or modify throughout the work of a building. But the rest of these are not credits backs. There are some previous change orders in the project that we are getting credit back for beginning of the project. Some of the things that can be negotiated. But this, this change order, tonight's resolution, is only one credit back, that's number 12.
And while you're standing here, Chief, can I add on to that? Just, we're, all these change orders, we're still very much within the budget contingency, which was small.
Yeah, so right now, like I said in the past, a typical contingency percentage budget for this project is 5% to 10%. That's about $750 to $1.5 million. Right now, we are less than 1% of construction change orders so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Sorry, we're within budget for the firehouse? Within that, we're within the budget for the firehouse? I'm sorry, Chief, through you, Council President.
Yes, right now, we are currently in budget, yes. And there are, the only one outlier there is New Jersey Transit, that was not budgeted for.
Right.
But we agreed that we sent a, it's called CCD, a constructive change directive, at the beginning of the project, that ended the project, that's going to come back up, that we feel the contractor is liable for that. So, we did, so that's something that, but take that out of the equation, we are within a budget currently.
Great.
Getting close, but we are within a budget. And with all the credits back, end of the day, we should be, we should be fine.
I've been hearing the opposite, so that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I think, through you, Council President, I think, I just want to be clear that unless that one piece is solved, correct? Unless the New Jersey Transit, we have to settle that piece. We have a decent amount of litigation with them, correct?
Yes. There is retainance. So, every time we make a payment to the contractor, the retainance held back, plus the final payment. There are quite a few items that we're going to have to negotiate at the end of the project that we feel the contractor can give us credit. It's quite a big number. We're still going over the number, but at the end of the project, we'll have to sit down with the attorney and their attorney, go over all the little, you know, negotiations back and forth. But our hope is that, at the end of the day, we'll have a lot of money will come back to us for credit.
Thank you. Are we good? Any other council comments? Good? Okay. Public comments? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, before we go to public comments, I am going to make a personal statement. So, I've lived in Summit with my family for over 15 years. Over those years, Summit has taught me that volunteering is a way of life. Participating in that lifestyle of giving back has led me to serve on council the last three and a half years and this past year as your council president. Being on council comes with challenges, but so does any leadership position. Serving the public, to me, is incredibly rewarding. And being up here has given me a chance to learn, grow, and truly appreciate the intricacies of local government and the dedication of everyone involved. I am continually impressed by the city's remarkable staff. And while recent changes have been, presented, have been unexpected challenges, I am certainly confident that Summit is on a strong path forward. Our city remains vibrant, welcoming, and a true wonderful place that we call home. So, with this in mind, it is with a heavy heart tonight that, for some personal reasons, I'm going to be stepping away from my position on common council. And Clerk Lickatis gave me pineapple pizza to remind myself not to cry. So, tonight's going to be my final meeting. And while I am tendering my resignation for personal reasons, my family and I are going to continue to live and be involved in town, in the town that we love, that we cherish, and that we live in. And I'm going to start by cheering on the football team at their home game on Saturday. So, as elected officials, we are all civic-minded volunteers, driven by passion and desire to make our town better. Each of us here, and every one of us who has served before us, has made some kind of beneficial contribution to our community. And it's important to honor that legacy. As a body, we are currently addressing the issues that matter most to all of our residents and fulfilling our commitments. We're keeping our community safe, we're standing against overdevelopment, and more importantly, we're ensuring residents feel comfortable and empowered to engage productively with council, whether it's in the community or at these meetings. While disagreement is a natural part of politics, I've always strived to keep these differences from becoming personal and instead focus on policies that serve the best interests of you, our residents. I want to extend my deepest appreciation to all the city staff who's helped me grow as a councilwoman and council president. Most of you know who you are, if you're watching, and I can't name everyone here, but I will reach out individually to express my gratitude. In the room, Rosemary, Tammy, and Matt, your support has been incredibly invaluable, especially this past year. Thank you all for your guidance and your mentorship. Mayor Fagan, I'd like to thank you for leading our town with such grace and vision. It has been an honor to work alongside you. I truly believe you are the right leader, for Summit's continued growth and well-being during these times. To my council colleagues, I believe that the Together for Summit team has been a wonderful addition to council this year. Your genuine desire to put residents first, to engage them in the neighborhoods, and help address the issues they care about is unparalleled. Fixing aging infrastructure, addressing excessive flooding, repairing bridges and roads, and pedestrian safety are all the core responsibilities of local government. And your commitment to these causes have been unwavering. Each of you brings a unique perspective that enriches policymaking. Greg and Andy, we've worked together for over three years, and I know you both care about serving our residents. Importantly, I believe we have more in common than not, and I hope that our shared goals like expanding sidewalks and improving parks and fixing our facilities will continue to guide that work. I could go on and on about my colleagues, but I'm going to keep it short because it's getting late. Lastly, I want to express my deepest gratitude to the residents of Summit who have supported me over the last several years, especially during the challenging Broad Street West deliberations. Together, we stood up for Summit, we fought against overdevelopment, and we won. Your incredible encouragement and your unity, your unity across the political spectrum to preserve Summit's charm gave me hope, and it kept me going. Embracing both the ups and downs over the last three and a half years, I am so proud to have served Summit alongside such dedicated colleagues. Sorry. Okay. My hope is that I have contributed toward making Summit a little bit better than when I started. I didn't think it was being started. And that my legacy will be one of focusing, we have tissue. That'll stop me for a second. I apologize, everybody. Robin Williams just walked in. Okay. So, my hope is that I have contributed towards making Summit a little bit better than when I started, and that my legacy will be one that's focused on what needs to get done, listening with an open heart, and showing empathy for all residents, regardless of their backgrounds, their economic status, and their ideological beliefs. Again, a heartfelt thank you to everybody, to all of you, for the opportunity and privilege of serving our special city of Summit. I look forward to continuing to see you around town, not as your elected official, but as your neighbor and your friend. So, thank you. Council comments? Yeah, you can go to that.
Could I have a break?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, we'll take a, does anyone else need to use the restroom really quickly? Yeah. We'll take a five-minute break. Just five-minute break. Want to call it back to, call the meeting back to order? I am going to open it up to public comments. At this point in the meeting, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement or has a question, please provide a copy to the city clerk at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers, please say your name, your home address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. If you come up and you are also representing an organization, please indicate which organization you are speaking for. Please come up. Okay. Hold on one second. Wait, 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 wait.
Wait, wait. Okay.
One more.
Ready? Are you going to, who's going to take over the timer? Dory Gagnon, 27, Bedford, first, that was like a real shocker. So, obviously, I have nothing prepared. And I usually don't, because I usually have my arms there, and you're going to miss the arms. But I want to say that I appreciate you. I didn't, I didn't know you. I knew you as a councilwoman three years ago with Broad Street West, and you were the only one up here who listened to me. You were the only one who fought for this town and stood up alongside us for Residents for Summit. And I want to thank you for having a voice with me and fighting back. Because if it weren't for you, Broad Street West would have been built. And I know you've had three years of a lot. But I want you to know, because of you, that building is not here today. So, you came as a councilwoman, but you're leaving as my friend. So, Lisa, Alan, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Good evening. You won't even need that. I'm Claire Touth at 11 Sunset Drive. At its July 30th meeting, council passed a new ordinance governing stormwater management. I was not able to attend that meeting, though I watched it. Director Schreger also was not there. So, the ordinance adopted on June 30th didn't have a written explanation to accompany it. So the ordinance adopted on June 30th didn't have a written explanation to accompany it. And Councilmember Hamlet, who put it forward, didn't give an oral overview. There was no comment at the public hearing, either from council members or from the community. Stormwater management's becoming critical. Witness the damage caused on August 18th, when we received five inches of rain in two hours. Rivers coursed through our streets and jumped the curbs. Yards eroded, houses that have never had water problems flooded. Last year, a storm on July 4th caused similar damage, and Summit has no citywide plan to deal with this. So I'd appreciate an explanation, in layperson's terms, of what this new ordinance does, what it changes, and why it's an improvement over what we had had. Thank you.
Do we order? Yeah, I'll let others come up and then we'll get to that, okay. All right, well, are there any other public comments? Okay.
Mark Gunderson, 5 Brook Court. I'm here to discuss with the changing of weather and the beautiful day today and some beautiful autumnal weather, you know, coming our way, I did wanna just briefly discuss outdoor dining in Summit, and specifically the possibility of closing Maple Street to create a dedicated outdoor dining space. And I know this has been spoken about, um, you know, from various perspectives over the last, you know, several months, and importantly, but I wanted to just say I think we need to strike a balance between ensuring safety and traffic flow on the one hand and promoting the vibrancy of outdoor dining on the other. Uh, I think sort of currently we seem to be stuck in an all-or-nothing approach, which is, you know, either a permanent closure for half the year or no closure at all, and this has created an impasse. And I do believe that there are alternative solutions that are worth exploring that address both safety and traffic concerns while still supporting outdoor dining on Maple Street. So, from what I understand, permanently closing a street is an arduous process. It's something we need to be able to demonstrate to the New Jersey Department of Transportation that such closure would increase safety and improve traffic flow. It's difficult with Maple Street, given that it's one of two fully north-south streets, as everybody knows, you know, downtown, along with, along with Summit Avenue. But my understanding is that the Department of Transportation approval is not required for a closure of 48 hours or less. And I would propose that council consider closing Maple Street for 48 hours each weekend during the next couple of months of beautiful autumn weather, as I mentioned at the beginning. And I think specifically, we could look at closing the street from Friday at 4:00 P.M. to Sunday at 4:00 P.M. In past council meetings, you know, people pointed out significant barrier to expanding outdoor dining has been the cost and logistics associated with setting up and maintaining outdoor furniture. My understanding is that historically, though, there have been grants to enable outdoor dining, there are furniture rental companies that might be able to, we could engage with, and I think there are creative ways to just make this financially viable for restaurants that participate. This 48-hour alternative might not be as ideal for restaurants as a permanent closure, but it's at least a middle ground to get started with. We can evaluate its success, we can, you know, then we can either scrap it, we can modify it based on what we learn, but overall, I think if it works, we could think aspirationally and expand the concept to other streets in Summit or even on a rotational basis. So, I'd say just in closing, as a member of Summit's Economic Development Advisory Committee, where we look to support all of our town's businesses and drive visitors to our commercial districts, I believe this initiative could benefit our community, and I encourage the council to work with Summit Downtown, Inc., and other local resources to explore this alternative further. Thank you.
Thank you. Your email, okay.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. I'm shocked you're leaving us. Thank you for your guidance over the last few months. Thank you for all you've done for Summit over the last few years. We're gonna miss you, and I was really shocked tonight, so enjoy your time now, and we're gonna miss you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Don't you make me cry, Deb. Deb McCann, 4 Colt Road. So I'm not gonna look at her, 'cause I'm gonna cry. So as someone who, you know, Dory's saying she just made friends with her, I've been friends with Lisa.
Say your name and address.
Oh, I thought I did.
Oh, you did.
I did.
Oh.
But I'll say it again.
Okay.
Deb McCann, 4 Colt Road. Sorry about that. So I've known Lisa since we started at, um, in Montessori, our kids were in Montessori, so like preschool. So I've known Lisa for a very long time, and now we have kids in college, so, um, the thing I can just say about her is what you see up here is, is, is her, you know, so you haven't changed in the, the, how long, 20 years I've known you? And, and so, you know, I just wanna say thank you. When I say you haven't changed, I mean that in your heart and that all you ever were focused on was what's best for Summit. That's never changed, from the days where we started saying, should we start getting involved in this town? And I went for the Ed Path, she went the Council Path, but always, everything was 100% what's best for Summit. So that has not changed. What has changed is, is, um, it just, you know, the, it really hasn't changed, but just the honesty, the bravery, you know, what I've witnessed over the years is just amazing. So, thank you for everything. You have definitely left a mark on this city. Thank you.
Are there any other council comments? I mean, I'm sorry. Public comments, sorry. Okay. I'm gonna close public comment, and I'm gonna kick it off to my council colleagues. Are there any council comments?
Yes. Thank you. Counsel. Let me just grab one of these just in case. Well, I wasn't, uh, planning on that, but, uh, let me just get to what I actually wrote. So I wanna give an update on the Department of Community Programs for this past summer. This year, the Department of Community Programs hosted the largest recreation summer camp in our history. Some of the highlights, we welcomed a new director, Mehdi Azar-Midi?
Azar Mendi.
Azar Mendi, thank you, uh, who did a fantastic job running the day-to-day operations. We increased camp capacity by 60 to a total of 450 campers. We continued the Trican Inclusion Program to allow for campers with special needs a unique and supportive environment. Strategically, we implemented the use of Cornhog Fieldhouse to a secondary, so that a secondary camp was allowed and the location that allowed this for the increased campers. For the first time ever, we transported our campers to and from swim lessons and the swim team for maximum program utilization. All of these new additions were intertwined with everyone's favorite camp activities. Our campers enjoyed their trips to Six Flags, Asbury Park, Tubing, and more. We fostered volunteer, fostering volunteerism remained an important experience by our older campers by having them work with Grace and the Tiny Forest every week. The fire department made weekly visits. The Summit Free Market, the Summit Free Public Library held storytime with our younger campers each week, and Mayor Fagan even had donuts with the mayor, uh, day to celebrate the last week of camp. It was a wonderful summer, and we know that everyone enjoyed it. We're already looking forward to next summer and even bigger and better. The summer on the Village Green remained as popular as ever. Five movies, five concerts, and National Night Out were all huge successes. It is these events that really helped to bring our city together and celebrate what is important, our sense of community. The events wrapped up with the Brian Kirk and the Jerks at the rained-out National Night Out, and I've never seen the Village Green so packed. Yesterday was the conclusion of another banner year at the Summit Family Aquatic Center. There were 42,139 visits by members and 7,272 guests, members visited our pool. We kicked off the summer with a hot summer Memorial Day weekend and ended with another packed Labor Day. There were over 50 kids involved in our swimming lessons for, for each of the six weeks that the lessons were held. Our Summit Sharks Swim Team went 6-2 for another amazing season. Daily senior aquatics kept our seniors fit in the water with up to 50 participants on any given day. Wednesdays remained everyone's favorite float night. This summer, we had our newest addition to the special events programming with a brand-new water polo class, complementing the already-existing paddleboard and kayaking classes. So who needs to go away when we have our own Summit Resort? So I wanted to thank, give a special thanks to Mark Ozerowski and David Guida and their team, as well as the pool managers for all of their hard work this summer. They did a great job. We did have a couple of hiccups with the pump on one of the hottest Sundays, uh, so we actually had to close the pool down for that, but they were, they did such a great job in getting that back up and running within 24 hours. So, again, a special thanks to Mark Ozerowski and Mike, uh, Mark Ozerowski and David Guida for their hard work over the summer. Everybody.
Baseball.
Baseball. All right.
Pineapple pizza.
I'm not even following Jamelle this time. Everybody knows that, you know, I'm the emotional one here, so, uh, Lisa, I've known you for many years, and, uh, I, all I can say is, it has been a privilege working with you for the past eight months on this dais. Hopefully, I will, obviously, I've known you for much longer, um, but thank you for all your hard work. You endured some unfortunate incidents where it was extremely disparaging and very disappointing on, um, some council meetings where you were not treated as nicely as the person that you are. And if people knew you, they would have never said those things about you. I don't know what your personal reasons are for leaving, but I can only imagine. So, if that's one of the reasons, I am truly sorry that you had to endure those evenings, and you will be sorely missed. So, thank you for your service.
Okay. Other council comments?
Are we going down the road?
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
I always feel like my mic isn't working for some reason. I don't know. Um, so Lisa, uh, when I met you over a year ago, uh, I feel like I've known you for like ever, right? You went out of your way to walk and door knock. You know, we've had moments together before coming up to the dais, and you were a part of, um, a piece of showing me the beauty in this whole process. The beauty in relating to residents, the beauty in being yourself, the beauty in being kind. There are leaders that have many different types of tempers, and at the end of the day, some of those leaders are effective and some are not, but the question becomes, did you have vision? Did you do what you said you were going to do? And do the people trust you? Mission accomplished. I think you hit all three of those points. Actually, I know you did. This journey, this last eight months, I'm sure, has shown yourself the side of you that probably didn't even know was there. You were a remarkable leader, and thank you for standing up for me personally. I appreciate you. Thank you for taking the time with me and walking me through this process. Thank you for having my back. I'm going to miss you. And I have to say, um, patting to my wife, no disrespect, but me and Lisa have never taken a bad picture. I've looked through 80 of them, and I tried to find one, and it's unbelievable. I couldn't find one bad picture. How's that possible? I can't get through a summer without having a bad picture just of myself, but, um, but thank you for your service, really. This, you did a fantastic job. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
You don't have to say anything.
I was gonna. I was gonna.
I would love you to say something.
Well, you know, I like to prepare.
Three things.
So, the city has 22,000 people in it. Very, very few get the privilege of serving here. Even fewer get to be council president, and it's a totally different scene over there for those watching. There's a button underneath there, you hit it with your knee sometimes, the police come in, it's a whole thing. There, there's, it's hotter under there, there's lights, there's more lights, and there's the adrenaline of, of the whole thing. And I found it to be less fun than expected. And I don't know, I don't know if that's fair to say for other people, but that's what I felt. And you and I have and continue to disagree fiercely on certain things. However, anybody willing to serve in, in this capacity and especially as council president, first of all, deserves to be thanked, so, thank you. And, and secondly, I will say I have enjoyed our work together. I have enjoyed our work together, when we disagree and when we haven't. So, thank you again.
So, I'm gonna read something because I will not be able to think about pineapple pizza and baseball without, you know, so, um, I might not even be able to read it. I wanna thank you, Council President Allen, for your incredible work over the past three and a half years. It has been a privilege to serve beside you and learn from you since January. You, uh, I'm incredibly grateful for your knowledge and your experience and your ability to show me the way. You have accomplished a great deal as council president and as a councilwoman, so, don't worry, you have left your mark on Summit in a really beautiful way. So I'm sad to see you go, but I also know that our council president, Pro Tom Hamlet, is well-equipped to continue some of the great things that you've begun. So, I cherish you as a friend, I cherish you as a role model, and I think that I don't know anybody that is more pure of heart and kind than you, Lisa Allen, so thank you.
Okay. I don't know, do you want to say?
Yes.
I feel a little awkward asking. What do you want to talk about? You want to say something nice about her?
As a council president, you have to tell us when. Um, I, I am sometimes a man of few words, and so I'm gonna use that this evening as my excuse, but they've said some very true things about you. I think you're, you've been very kind, open-minded to people with different ideas, and I appreciate that honestly.
Well, I'm gonna talk about you, but I first would like to address the resident who talked about the stormwater management.
Thank you for bringing that back.
No problem. So I've known Claire for, geez, we've been playing golf for a long time, Claire, and bad golf. What I will tell you, and since you know me and know that I'm diligent, I think you would agree, drainage is about all I do right now. In fact, I bought a pair of work boots the other day because I was ruining my shoes so much going in people's backyards, and couldn't even believe I did it, but I did it. There's been so many things we're doing to tackle the stormwater management plan. Just this past week, I emailed Director Schreger, and I said, you know, our drainage plan is from 2020. Can we get you, I know he's short-staffed, can we get you help in order to update this? Can we outsource this? I've reached out to Millennium several, several times this week with different asks for grant approvals for various different improvements for Salt Brook. We've put RFPs out for stream, for, uh, stream water stabilization.
We've put RFPs out for stream water stabilization. Can't read my writing. And I would put this on Mr. Tucci. I'm gonna give you a few projects to take on, which include 722 Springfield, which is the Salt Brook. 15 West End, spent some time there last week. 36 Pembroke called me this week. Oakley Avenue was there for several hours the other week. 6 Dogwood. We're looking at that resolution in the zoning board. 3 Hobart Culvert, Montrose. We've engaged DEP, FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers, and various other agencies. It's exhausting. I would say that a lot of these issues are caused by projects or houses that aren't through the zoning. They don't have their CO. So, it's the gray area. What we have done in our committee just as of this year is we have established a post-board approval protocol. What used to happen was that a lot of times, people would call and they would say, my house is flooded. And we would say, well, we can't help you because it's not... They're not violating anything. And Director Schreger... I would drive Director Schreger crazy. So, we finally came up with a formalized process, which put residents in a queue that we were going to answer. There was no more, we don't have an answer. We're going to put them in the process. We're going to see if they can appeal to the zoning board, pre or post. We're truly trying to problem solve. So, I don't know why my colleagues didn't ask about the stormwater management plan. I will tell you, it took Director Schreger a long time. It was the last day of approval. I think we were even late on that. I think we have the full faith and confidence in him that it was done correctly. And, you know, I had no questions. We spent a lot of time. So, to say that we're not focusing on drainage couldn't be further from the truth. So, thank you for all your hard work. But Mr. Tucci, I've got some jobs for you.
Amen.
Lisa, I... It's with a heavy heart that you're leaving. And I don't think when I'm up there and I leave, there's not gonna be this many tears because I think people will probably cheer when I leave. So, if it's any consolation, this might be the last crying bout. So, you know, keep your tissues and you don't bring them with you at the next meeting. But what I will say, and what Lisa's so good about, is caring for people. The amount of basements that she was in, and she couldn't stop talking about it. It's to the point where I'm onto the next house, and she's still talking about the old house. You know, and then she's still dealing with this whole council president role. So, she'd go back to Rosie for a different issue. Then she'd follow up with me. And all the time while she was doing that, you know what she's concerned about? Including Andy and Greg, which is great. But she always wanted to make sure that we were including them. And it's not that I didn't want to, but sometimes I just didn't have the time. I mean, I didn't have the time to talk to you about your question that I had today. But it was really important for her to create a team this year. And I think she genuinely felt, and I think we all do. I think we all want to work together. These are all issues that aren't about politics. It's about fixing stormwater management or houses. And she made that her mission this year. And I'm proud of her for that. In every conversation we had, did you talk to Greg? Did you talk to Greg? Did you include Greg? Did you talk to Andy? I don't have to... We don't have that many committees this year. But, you know, it was her sincere and genuine effort at keeping this team together. The city of Summit is certainly much better off with you. But I hope you find some peace and quiet and enjoying your son's last year. So, thank you.
So, Lisa, thank you for your service. We'll miss you and your level-headed approach to governance and campaigning. If any of y'all out there are ever thinking about doing something crazy, run it by Lisa. She'll pull you back, you know, if you're a little too aggressive. I know it hasn't always been easy. And it's cliche, but nothing worth doing ever is. And you've handled those rough times with good humor and perseverance. And I just want to say I appreciate you and I'm proud to call you my friend.
Do you have any updates on anything else?
Nope.
I'm not a council person or an elected official, but I do have something to say. So, Lisa, I've worked with a lot of council presidents. And everyone has their own style. But you, you do it with style. You do it with grace. And above all, you do it with kindness and consideration for everyone here. They may not have appreciated it at times, but I think all in all, they knew who you were. You were trying to be fair to everyone. And for that, I appreciate you. You were fantastic.